Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Criminal Justice. At this time, we ask you to silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.myc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, please do not approach the dais. We thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you Sergeant. Good morning. I am Councilmember Sandy Nurse, Chair of the Council's Committee on Criminal Justice. Welcome to today's oversight hearing on the complaint and grievance procedures for people in custody. I want to recognize my sole colleague here, Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse. Thank you for joining us this morning. Chaos and violence at Rikers Island makes headlines and there is no doubt that the conditions there are dangerous for people in custody and staff alike. However, the reason those conditions exist is not fully understood by the public. This administration has repeatedly fallen back on a convenient rationale that because the people incarcerated there are facing serious accusations, violence on Rikers Island is inevitable. While it's easy to say Rikers is violent because of the people housed there, I have yet to see actual evidence or studies supporting this hypothesis. Research suggests what's actually most critical for maintaining safety and order inside of a jail is legitimacy of the institution and the establishment of procedural justice. In other words, the amount of violence in jail is directly related to how people are treated inside and whether adequate avenues exist to meet basic needs. That's what we're here to examine today. How the New York City Department of Correction resolves issues that are brought to their attention and provides care for the people in their custody. DOC's grievance process is the formal way people in custody can request adequate food, clothing, or medical care, or the way they might inform the department that they have been denied access to school, harassed by staff, or sexually assaulted. The guideposts for the grievance process exist on paper in the form of a DOC directive, but as it is currently designed, the process is unnecessarily convoluted and seems to be rarely actually followed. A streamlined, legitimate, and responsive process would resolve issues and reduce tension among people in custody. Unfortunately, the system that exists now compounds problems instead of solving them. This failure to follow procedures not only leads to frustration and violence, but also allows myriad serious problems to fester until they reach a breaking point. It's recently been reported that accusations of sexual abuse and assault by jail staff were the subject of more than half of the cases filed in state Supreme Court under the Adult Survivors Act. A motion filed by the Legal Aid Society earlier this month alleges young adults in custody are systematically denied the opportunity to attend school, and there are ongoing lawsuits regarding the environmental conditions at Rikers Island. The denial of medical care and the extreme high rates of use of force by staff. The available data on grievances filed by people in custody demonstrates these issues weren't unknown. They've just been unaddressed. Our analysis shows that grievances have been rising over the last four years, especially complaints coming from a vulnerable population housed in mental health observation units. Of the complaints that DOC deems subject to the grievance process, about 30% relate to the provision of medical care. Of the complaints that aren't handled under the formal grievance process, a majority of complaints are against staff, reports of assault or sexual abuse, or complaints related to housing and a fear for personal safety. Today, we hope to learn more about how DOC and CHS uses this information and how they plan to be more proactive in addressing the serious problems the data identifies. We will also hear directly from the Board of Correction, the jail oversight body that both monitors the grievance process itself and also works independently to ensure minimum standards are met. If the true goal of this and previous administrations was to reduce violence and ensure people do not leave city custody worse than when they enter it, we are failing to not only meet that goal, but demonstrate a concerted effort to get there. In design and practice, the DOC's grievance process leaves many vulnerable individuals who have not been convicted of a crime to suffer in an isolated environment without an adequate opportunity to have their voice heard. Today's hearing is about demanding accountability from the people in charge and learning about their concrete plans to change this paradigm. I do want to warn listeners that we will be touching upon topics of sexual assault and abuse, so please take care as needed. I will now ask our committee counsel to swear in the first panel of administration witnesses. And I will read the names. So I will now introduce our first panel of administration witnesses and ask the committee counsel to swear them in. With us today, we have Sherian Rembert, Assistant Chief of Administration; James Saunders, Deputy Commissioner of Health Affairs; Jonathan Levine, Assistant Commissioner of Special Investigations; Michelle Stafford, Executive Director of the Office of Constituent and Grievance Services; Nancy Sevasta, Acting General Counsel, there you are, okay. From CHS, we have Jeanette Merrill, Assistant Vice President, Communications and External Affairs of H&amp;H CHS. And I'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you. If you could all please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to council member questions? Noting for the record that all witnesses answered affirmatively, you may begin your testimony.
Good morning Chair Nurse and members of the Committee on Criminal Justice. I am Sherian Rembert, Assistant Chief at the New York City Department of Correction. I am here today with my colleagues to discuss the department's complaint and grievance procedures and the work that is underway to enhance and improve this vital system. We recognize that a transparent grievance process and timely and meaningful resolution of complaints reinforces a safe and humane environment for all. For several years, the department has strived to improve the grievance process by using technology, innovation, and streamlining procedures. We remain committed to these efforts. It is our goal to make the grievance process as accessible and clear as possible in order for people in our custody to know they have a meaningful avenue to have complaints heard and addressed. Individuals in the department's care have multiple avenues to submit a complaint to DOC, including calling 311, placing complaint forms in grievance boxes distributed throughout the facility, and speaking directly with departmental staff. In addition, complaints can be submitted directly to the Board of Correction, the Department of Investigation, and other oversight and investigative bodies. The grievance process, including how to submit a complaint, is outlined on posters throughout facilities and in the individual in custody handbook, which is distributed to all people in custody upon intake and made available on the tablets. Complaints that are submitted to DOC are managed by the Department Office of Constituent and Grievance Services, referred to as OCGS. OCGS triages, tracks, follow-up on individual complaints, and report complaints trends to departmental leadership to ensure systematic issues can be identified and addressed. A team of dedicated OCGS staff toured the facilities regularly to make people in custody aware of the grievance process, replenished complaint forms, collect forms left in grievance boxes, and discuss and investigate complaints that are filed. Members of the public and other third parties can also submit a complaint on behalf of a person in custody by calling 311 or submitting a grievance form. A centralized team of OCGS staff managed the information phone line and inbox as well as complaints routed from 311 and ensured that all complaints submitted to the department are properly recorded in a centralized database and monitored until resolution. The department categorizes complaints in one of three different ways to determine how the complaint will be managed: grievable, non-grievable, or rejected. Grievable complaints are related to conditions of confinement and subsequently addressed by OCGS staff or staff from other units that are based in the facilities. These include complaints related to clothing, law library, or commissary, to name a few. OCGS staff will work with people in custody to address complaints related to missing items such as linen or toiletries. Complaints related to identified services such as religion, program, and visitation will be tasked out to unit or command that oversees the operation for resolution. Grievable issues are expected to be resolved expeditiously. OCGS tracks all complaints for their life cycle and will send out reminders to command leadership or otherwise escalate as needed until the complaint has been addressed and subsequently closed out. Once a grievable complaint has been closed out, it is assigned an outcome status and the person in custody is notified of the outcome. Non-grievable complaints typically involve an allegation that must undergo an administrative investigative process. Complaints that are related to condition of confinement that cannot be immediately addressed by OCGS. This includes complaints related to fear for safety, assault, medical or mental health care, and disability accommodations, to name a few. Complaints that are non-grievable are forwarded to the appropriate unit or provided partners for future investigation and resolution. OCGS continues to track the life cycle of these complaints and is notified when they are addressed, but is not made aware of the detail or contents of the investigation. Because OCGS does not manage the investigation or resolution for these matters, OCGS does not provide an outcome status to the person in custody who filed the complaint. People in custody must be notified of the outcome of the complaint by the unit that manages the complaint, depending on the matter. Complaints that pertains to matters that the department cannot provide a response to, such as a complaint about New York State prisons, external institutions, or a complaint that does not contain enough information to process further, are rejected. If a grievable complaint made by a person in custody is rejected, OCGS staff will notify the individual as to the reason the complaint was rejected so that the matter is addressed or for them to file the complaint with the applicable entity. If a non-grievable complaint is rejected, the person in custody typically would not be notified either because the complaint does not have enough information to identify the complainant or because the complaint is outside the scope of the department's work. Grievable complaints managed directly by OCGS staff can be appealed if an individual in custody is not satisfied with the outcome. Information on how to appeal a grievance outcome is provided on the disposition returned to the person in custody with the grievance outcome. As a first step in the process, people in custody may request that the evidence submitted to support the outcome of their complaint be reviewed by a facility or unit's commanding officer. Upon review, the commanding officer will either affirm the original outcome or provide a different outcome. If the person in custody is still not satisfied with the resolution, they can appeal to the Central Office Review Committee, which is comprised of individuals who are not involved in initial investigation or resolution processes, and includes the Executive Directive of OCGS, a uniform leader, a non-uniform leader, and a representative from the department's legal division. At this stage, an independent investigation is conducted by the committee utilizing all evidence, statements, and documents gathered, and a final disposition is provided to the person in custody. This disposition is final and cannot be appealed further. Grievable complaints that are not investigated and addressed by OCGS staff cannot be appealed. However, if OCGS observes continued complaints about a grievable issue tasked out to another unit, they will reach out to the unit leadership to alert them in order for the unit to work towards a resolution. Non-grievable issues cannot be appealed through OCGS as they are governed by regulation and procedures that fall outside the scope of OCGS's work, such as use of force and/or prior-related matters. The work of OCGS is critical to ensure that our jails remain safe and humane and that the department is continuously exploring ways to leverage complaint data and improve the complaint and grievance process. OCGS utilizes data to inform department leadership about emerging issues and to drive optional operational change in areas that can be improved. Reports that capture the rate of incoming complaints and trends in top complaint categories are shared with facility and unit leadership daily so that systematic issues can be identified early and strategically addressed. When facilities or newly commissioned or new initiative has been implemented, OCGS provides a recurring 30-day complaint trend report to aid leadership and making any needed changes to operation. OCGS also engages in heightened monitoring and reporting during inclement weather and other emergency events that may impact facility operation and people in the department's care to ensure issues that may impact health or safety can be identified and addressed quickly. In January of this year, the department launched a public platform on its site that allows members of the public to check the status or outcome of a complaint they have submitted. On the heels of this initiative, the department is actively working to develop an application that will allow people in custody to submit grievance via tablets to increase access to the grievance process. We anticipate launching this new application in the summer of this year. The goal of the complaint and the grievance processes is to provide a greater voice and support for those in our care so that everyone who lives and works in the jails can return home to their families and communities safely. We appreciate the council's interest and support in this very important work, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My colleagues and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good morning Chair Nurse and Councilmember Caban. I am Jeanette Merrill, Assistant Vice President of Communications and External Affairs for New York City Health and Hospitals Correctional Health Services, also known as CHS. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about CHS's processes for addressing patient complaints about the health care provided in the jails. CHS was established in 2016 as a new division of New York City Health and Hospitals in order to provide high-quality health care to people in the custody of the Department of Correction, not as a contracted service, but as the direct provider of care. To provide a sense of volume within our service, last calendar year, CHS provided or facilitated more than 433,600 scheduled health services to more than 26,000 patients. This includes approximately 223,000 nursing appointments, 18,800 medicine appointments, 105,600 mental health appointments, 42,400 reentry service appointments, 9,000 dental appointments, 15,500 substance use appointments, 15,500 on-island specialty services appointments, and 3,700 off-island specialty services appointments. Additionally, more than 20,000 clinical intakes were conducted at the point of admission, and there were 50,000 referred visits. CHS also provides non-scheduled health services, including injury evaluations. In addition to increasing the breadth and quality of health care provided in the jails, CHS has endeavored to improve the communication with people in custody, our patients, concerning the health services we provide. We encourage our patients to discuss their health care concerns, complaints, and requests directly with their providers during clinical encounters. However, we also recognize the importance of maintaining other pathways for patients to communicate their needs and concerns. Accordingly, CHS developed and implemented in early 2020 the CHS Health Triage Line to enable our patients to contact CHS directly about their non-emergency health concerns. Using their tablets or the phones in their housing areas, patients can call the Health Triage Line to speak directly and confidentially with a CHS nurse or during off-hours to leave a voicemail, all of which are reviewed and appropriately handled. Last calendar year, patients made 48,622 calls to the Health Triage Line, 90% of which were answered live. 63% of the total calls resulted in the triage nurse scheduling a clinic appointment for the patient, and 37% of the calls were handled administratively. If the patient calls to share a complaint or concern about the health care services received in custody, CHS's Patient Relations Department will manage the inquiry. CHS Patient Relations manages requests and complaints from patients, family members, attorneys, and other external parties relating to the health care CHS provides. The Patient Relations Team receives these inquiries via email or phone and then determines whether the inquiry is a request for services or a complaint about services provided. Last calendar year, CHS Patient Relations received 12,998 inquiries, including 5,361 requests for health services, 4,643 complaints about health services, and 2,994 requests and complaints concerning DOC, which Patient Relations sends to DOC to address. If the inquiry concerns a request for health services, Patient Relations contacts the clinic in the facility where the patient is housed in order to process the request. If the inquiry concerns a complaint about health services, Patient Relations assigns the case to one of its registered nurse RN investigators. Regarding the largest categories of health care complaints that Patient Relations received last calendar year, 36% concerned medication, 33% concerned access to care, and 20% concerned quality of care. The 4,643 complaints were made by 2,803 unique individuals. After reviewing the patient's medical chart and relevant CHS policies, the RN investigator sends a preliminary case summary to the clinical and operations teams in the relevant facility to review and to provide feedback and next steps within 48 hours. The RN investigator follows up with the clinical team to ensure CHS has addressed the patient's concerns and to compile a preliminary investigation determination. Following the investigation, preliminarily confirmed complaints are reviewed during Patient Relations' monthly Quality Improvement Committee meetings to make a final determination. During these meetings, an interdisciplinary team that includes staff from medicine, nursing, mental health, pharmacy, and operations reviews the claim, the investigative findings, and the preliminary determination. Examples of recent confirmed complaints include a patient who experienced a delay in receiving eyeglasses because the vendor did not send the order, and a patient who did not receive Tylenol despite it being referenced as part of the plan of care because the provider did not submit the medication during the injury encounter. Last calendar year, less than 1% of the 4,643 complaints about health services were clinically determined to be valid, meaning that the vast majority of complaints were not supported after a review of the medical record and of the effect on the patient's care. For example, a patient recently issued a complaint that CHS had denied him access to dental services, but during the investigation process, the RN determined that there was an active referral for dental services in the patient's health record, and the appointment was scheduled within the appropriate timeframe. Therefore, the complaint was deemed unconfirmed. Regardless of whether the Patient Relations Team confirms the clinical validity of the complaint, CHS works to address every patient's complaint or concern at the facility level. Each investigation is used to identify opportunities for improvement within CHS. We recognize we have a profound responsibility and opportunity to care for some of the most marginalized New Yorkers while they are in the city's custody, and CHS is committed to continuing to find ways to improve the quality of the health care we provide. The mission-driven professionals who work for CHS work each day on behalf of our patients to provide a community standard of care despite the challenges and restrictions of a jail environment. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to recognize Councilmember Shahana Hanif is on Zoom. We've been joined by Councilmember Tiffany Caban. So thank you for your testimony today. And we've been joined by Councilmember Chris Marte. So I'm going to start just with some line of questioning around the procedures themselves and then the data. So I wanted to start with a yes or no question. Is everyone in custody who raises an issue by filing a grievance form or by calling 311 entitled to a response from DOC?
Good morning. I'm Dr. Michelle Stafford, the Executive Director of the Office of Constituent and Grievance Services. Yes, all persons in our care have access.
Thank you. And the response to that grievance is people are supposed to get a 7102R, the formal resolution disposition form, is that right?
Correct. They have the forms in their housing areas, and once a disposition, if grievable is provided, they do receive a disposition.
Okay. So according to the directive, everyone who files a grievance is entitled this formal resolution to address their concern, but the reporting that we get and that is provided to the council should show that an equal number of grievances filed is equal to the number of formal resolutions. But that's not really the case in the reporting. So what percentage of grievances receive a formal resolution?
All complaints that are grievable and investigated directly by OCGS staff do receive a formal resolution.
Okay.
Complaints per our policy at this time that are non-grievable do not receive a resolution. We are actively working to provide access to persons in our care where they can receive a resolution.
Okay. According to the analysis done by our data team, less than 15% of grievances filed within the past four years were resolved at the formal level with this formal resolution. And in fact, in your report that covered January through March of this year, there were 9,148 grievances filed and exactly one grievance was resolved at the formal level. So off the bat, it's showing me that there's some kind of breakdown here in the system.
Yes. So all grievable complaints where persons in custody wish to appeal, they can go through that process. That's the only time they would continue to appeal through that formal process. Oftentimes, persons in custody do not continue to appeal.
So you're saying that if, I'm not talking about an appeal.
Right.
Even just, I filed a grievance.
Yes.
Am I entitled to get a 7102, some kind of response, a formal resolution?
If the matter is grievable and investigated by OCGS staff, yes, they will receive a disposition. If it is non-grievable per the directive, at this time, we do not provide a response. If the matter is addressed by an internal unit, which is non-grievable, they may not necessarily receive a disposition, but action will be provided.
Okay. So as I'm understanding, grievances cannot be filed electronically on tablets, and we've heard repeatedly that calls to 311 often trigger no action. So the other option that folks have is filling out the grievance form, 7101R, and dropping it into a grievance box. And we see most of the complaints coming in from 311 calls, which maybe indicates there's potentially a lack of access to grievance boxes or maybe there's other issues there. So as of today, is there a grievance box in every housing facility on Rikers Island?
I'd like to back up at this time. If a grievable complaint is received electronically via 311, that complaint is tasked to OCGS staff, and it is addressed within policy. There are 50 grievance boxes across the facilities that are in targeted common areas such as the corridor, law library programs, and the clinic.
So it's your testimony today that every housing facility has a grievance box?
I would not say every housing area. They're in targeted common areas. In the facilities, there are 50 boxes.
Okay. So we've heard there are no grievance boxes in NIC or West Facility. Can you confirm if those are there or not?
I can confirm that there are grievance boxes in the West Facility, and there are grievance boxes in the targeted common areas in the NIC.
Okay. Okay. So a grievance box is installed in what you're saying is targeted common areas, but we've also heard that some folks have really had challenges accessing the box because they're sometimes located where people might not really have the ability to visit on a regular basis. So how do you make sure grievance boxes are accessible to people in custody?
It is our goal to ensure that persons in custody have access to the grievance process. OCGS staff tour housing areas two to three times a week to meet directly with persons in custody. At that time, they can receive the actual paper complaint from the person in custody, and they're also reviewing the boxes.
Great. And you know, access is super important since a grievance has to be filed within 10 business days from the date of the incident?
Absolutely.
Right. So is the grievance form 7101R, that one in actual grievance boxes, is that available on-site? Is that available in multiple languages on-site?
Yes, it is. It is available.
So if I go to, how many languages are in those forms?
I believe there are 13 languages. However, the languages that are readily available in the housing area are both in English and in Spanish. If another language If another language is required, the person in custody can simply ask OCGF staff. And we work with internal units to determine which language is required.
Okay. And if someone has a disability, who do they ask to help fill out the form? How do they contact someone?
So persons in custody, again, when OCGF staff are doing their tours, which they do two to three times a week, they can speak directly to the OCGF staff member or to the officer on post, and we will work with them accordingly.
And can you confirm that at least three times per week, OCGF staff are visiting punitive segregation, hospital wards, mental observation units, and other special housing areas where a detainee perhaps cannot directly access the grievance box?
The department does not operate punitive segregation housing areas. General housing areas will receive a tour from a grievance worker two to three times a week. The specialized housing areas will receive three for sure by OCGF staff.
Okay.
And let's just track. I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, so for punitive segregation areas, you're saying their tours are not happening for OCGF staff?
The department does not have any housing areas identified for punitive segregation.
Okay. Okay. Since most of the complaints come through 311, it's important to have access to the phone or a working tablet. We've heard reports from legal service providers that the phone system, whether it's landlines and housing areas or other phone applications on an individual's tablet, is often arbitrarily shut down so that no calls can be placed. Not only does this limit the ability of people in custody to call 311, but also to call family members or request urgent medical attention from CHS. In particular, we've heard this frequently happens during lockdowns, which strips people of the opportunity to lodge complaints about deprivations caused by lockdown. So in what specific circumstance and, or circumstances, and what is the justification for the department deciding to shut down phone access at certain times?
Persons in custody are able to place complaints within departmental policy. The grievance forms are available during the lockdown, which is in the housing areas. However, once the lockdown is lifted, they are able to utilize the phones in the housing area and the tablets. I will defer this question to Assistant Chief Rembert.
But just really quickly, so during lockdown, you're saying folks can access the grievance box?
If they're in a dormitory setting, yes.
Good morning, Chief, Assistant Chief Rembert. Can you repeat your question as far as the lockdown portion, please?
So, you know, access to the phones, very important. It's where most people are making their complaints because their most complaints are going through 311. So we've heard that they're losing access to phones during lockdowns, particularly during lockdowns. So in what specific circumstances and what is the justification for the department to shut down phones or phone access during lockdowns?
If there's an incident that have transpired in the facilities and we need to conduct an investigation or search, the phones are shut down for safety and security. As soon as it is completed, then the phones will be lifted for them to use their tablets or the phones. In addition, their phones are, the tablets are not in use during lock-in. It's scheduled lock-in, especially at nighttime.
And so on average, what would you say an average lockdown time period is?
I do not have that response at this time to give you the data on that, but I will circle back with you.
Okay. I'd love that follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so going back to the resolution of grievances, given how the data is showing that less than fifteen percent of grievances filed receive a formal resolution, I wonder, I want to understand what it means when your reporting shows the overwhelming majority of the grievances filed are deemed accepted. For instance, in the third quarter of FY24, nearly seventy percent of grievances filed were considered accepted. In your directive, there is a definition of when a grievance is considered accepted. It's on page seven. And if you have access to it, would you, would you read it on, read the definition for the record?
I don't have access to it at this time.
Okay, I have it for you. So the definition of an accepted grievance filed in Directive 3376R, "accepted" means is used when the complaint is being handled by the grievance coordinator or tasked, and/or tasked to any unit slash facility. This does not validate whether a complaint is substantiated or unsubstantiated. Selecting this field also confirms an inmate's request, requested action is met. So based on this definition, can you explain how the term "accepted" can be used to describe both when a grievance is being handled and when it's been resolved? So as an example, if someone's not getting clean clothes and they filed a complaint and it gets categorized as accepted, what am I to understand about the status or outcome of that complaint?
So when a complaint is deemed accepted, it means that it falls within the purview of the department. And we can investigate the department, whether that's by OCGF staff, if it's a grievable matter, if it's by an internal unit, grievable but tasked and/or assigned out, and non-grievable, meaning that it's going to go under another administrative process. Rejected complaints are complaints that do not fall within the department's scope or fall under external agencies or are part of a return of grievance, a duplicative complaint.
Well, you could see how the definition of the word is, so the way this is described in the terminology from the handbook or from this directive, you can see it's pretty broad. So, you know, we're looking at the data and we're saying "accepted", again, is used when a complaint is being handled by the grievance coordinator and/or tasked to any unit slash facility. Does not validate whether complaint is substantiated or unsubstantiated. And selecting this field also confirms an inmate's requested action is met. So it's not clear if it's resolved, if they got, you know, in the example I brought out, did they get clean clothes? Did they not get clean clothes?
Yes, I can see.
Yeah, so I mean, it would be really helpful if maybe we could work together to resolve that terminology and that definition because, you know, right now, there's no way of knowing, you know, what the status of these complaints are or if they were adequately resolved. And we don't know if people, you know, we hear complaints all the time. People aren't getting medicine, they're not getting food, they're not getting their clothes. There's heat, the heating issues, there's whatever is going on. And this terminology does not lend itself to understand what the conclusion of these outcomes are.
Thank you. So we're actively reviewing our policies, and when it's finalized, we're more than happy to follow up.
Okay. So what percentage of dismissed or closed grievances are related to a grievance that was filed too late or not signed?
I don't have that data with me, however. I'm sorry, can you ask that question again?
So, you know, there's a timeframe in which people have to submit this, the 710, the 71.
Within ten days.
Yeah, or in the grievance form, within ten days. How many, how many times have, what is the percentage of those grievances filed that are dismissed because they were filed out of the time period or they weren't signed or there was something wrong with the form?
So OCGF staff make every effort, every effort to ensure that the dispositions are signed. And so I would say the small, it's a small percentage. I don't have that data with me. However, the data that you are reviewing does not include data, complaints that were rejected. So it's only accepted matters.
No, I know. That's why I was asking.
It's a, it's a small percentage. I don't have that with me.
Okay, I'd love to request that in the follow-up. Okay, in an instance, when a grievance is filed through 311, and this is my question because I was really trying to understand the logistics of the procedures of getting this form filled out. So if someone fills out the form or files a grievance via 311, my understanding is it has to be signed? Or even if someone files on behalf of someone, it has to be signed, is that right?
So persons in custody, if it's placed through the grievance box, yes, it has to be signed. If a complaint is received, a grievable complaint is received electronically and being addressed by grievance staff, they will meet, they will take the grievable electronic complaint, transfer it to an internal form that we created, and then go in the line with the person in custody in which they would sign.
And so my understanding from reading the directive is that the employee that goes to the person affected must be a grievance coordinator, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there times or is it a common practice for correction officers to walk that form to the person affected?
That, I don't have knowledge of that. However, OCGF staff do ensure that these forms are signed by persons in custody. We manage our own paperwork.
So it's your testimony that you're not sure if in the instance of bringing this, this physical form to someone, a person affected, that it's always the case that it's a grievance coordinator? You're not sure that?
It is always my, it's my understanding that it's OCGF staff that are having the form signed from the person in custody.
And so just to, for my, just to continue to clarify, a grievance coordinator, there's grievance coordinators and then there's grievance officers. And the only person in the directive on the policy is that, that can bring that form and communicate with that person who is affected is the coordinator. But what you're saying is general staff may be the one doing that?
OCGF staff, correct.
Okay. Do you believe if a correction officer is, perhaps, maybe there's a staffing issue for the day, perhaps a CEO goes and brings it? Do you believe that it would create a situation where retaliation could occur or grievance might be not moved along further into the process?
OCGF has both uniform and non-uniform staff, so we make every effort to ensure that OCGF staff are serving or providing the disposition. So that's all that I can speak to at this time.
Okay. If a person files a grievance and the grievance coordinator proposes a solution that a person in custody does not agree with, or if the grievance coordinator dismisses the complaint, there are supposed to be three additional layers of appeal. The first is to appeal to the decision to the commanding officer. After that, an appeal goes to the division chief, and finally, to the Central Office Review Committee. Back in 2019, when this committee held a hearing on the grievance process, one of the recommendations made by the Board of Correction and other advocates was that DOC simplify the grievances process. And in testimony, BOC said that from start to finish, the appeal process can take more than ten weeks to complete. What is the rationale for having three layers of appeal before a person is given a final determination about their grievance?
It is our goal to ensure that we do a thorough and thorough investigation for all complaints that we receive. When the complaints go through the appeal process, we believe that it affords an opportunity for each level to do, conduct an independent investigation where more evidence can be provided to, in hopes to either substantiate or unsubstantiate whatever the matter is. That's why it would take such time.
Okay. And then it seems like after that hearing, there was an additional layer added in. Instead of simplifying it and streamlining it, there was an additional layer, the preliminary evidentiary review, which seems to make the process a little more complicated for people in custody. Is there a reason for adding that additional layer?
That additional layer is only utilized if the OCGF staff member identifies that they would like for it to be reviewed. At this time, we have a small percentage that actually utilize that option as we hope to provide a speedy response to the person in custody.
Okay, if in the follow-up, you could let us know what that percentage is, that would be really helpful. Okay, the grievance directive does not really say how many days a detainee has to file an appeal to the commanding officer. Why is that? What is, what is DOC's recommendation? And when will it give a clear timeline in the directive?
We are actively reviewing the policy to see how we can enhance how we provide a response and a speedy response to persons in custody. Internally, we have worked to create a five-day turnaround time for persons in custody to either support whether they're in the housing areas at the time when we come or to give ourselves time to make sure that we're providing response, so that's.
Okay. Has DOC eliminated the second layer of appeal that goes to the division chief?
Yes, we have.
Okay, that's great. When will that be reflected in policy?
We're currently reviewing it, and once the policy is.
It sounds like you're doing a big review here of the grievance policy.
It's our goal to make sure we're transparent.
No, I understand. But do you have a sense of timeline on when this process is going to be?
Well, we're actively reviewing the policy and how we report out our data, and once it is available, we will provide it.
Okay. No, I understand. I've heard that it's an active process. Just trying to understand if there's a timeline here. Having a cumbersome grievance process obviously creates serious consequences in terms of access to the justice system. After the passage of the Prison Litigation Reform Act in 1996, a detained person cannot have federal civil rights violations redressed in court unless all administrative remedies are first exhausted. To your knowledge, how many times has the Law Department used non-exhaustion of administrative remedies as a rationale to dismiss lawsuits filed by people in custody?
I am unable to provide that answer, however, I would defer to Assistant Chief Rembert.
Okay. And we sent these over on Monday? Okay, so we sent these over on Monday. I know it's not the fastest turnaround, I understand, Monday morning, but there's a lot of people work at DOC, and it would be great in the future. If, even if you just give us X amount of days you need ahead of time and prep for the meeting, because I know we sent these questions over, and I think it's a pretty, pretty simple set of questions.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to defer to, I'm sorry, Sheri Emmerich, Assistant Chief. Let me defer to General Counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Nancy Sevast, Acting General Counsel for the Department of Correction. That information is actually not in the possession of the Department of Correction, and we would have to defer to the New York City Law Department for that information.
Okay. Helpful. Thank you. I have, I'm going to move into, I just have a couple more questions around the data, and then I'm going to touch upon sexual assault. And then I'm going to open it up to other council members. Okay, so just a couple of quick questions around compliance reporting, compliance with data reporting. So the council passed a local law in 2019 which mandated that all complaints and requests made on behalf of a detained individual get addressed by the Office of Constituent and Grievance Services. We have heard directly from legal service providers that there remains no process for a third-party complaint to be handled through the grievance process. So beyond the assignment of an index number, legal providers who file a grievance on behalf of their clients get no indication that it's been integrated into the grievance system, and they are never presented with a proposed resolution or opportunity to appeal a resolution. Is there a reason the department appears to be out of compliance with this local law?
Anyone can place a complaint about a person in custody on behalf of the person in custody using 311 or other avenues. The department recently implemented a complaint status system in January of this year where anyone, the public, can follow up on the status of their complaint or the outcome of their complaint.
Okay, great. But there's no, I get that it's a publicly available database, but there's no actual process for if, for example, a legal service provider that's representing someone or supporting someone files a complaint on behalf, they get the index number, but there's no mechanism within your system that lets them know an outcome or resolution of the case?
They may utilize the index number that they receive to go through the department's website where our complaint status system is housed to find the status or the outcome of the complaint.
And that's the January, the publicly made available one, just this January?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Another local law passed in 2019 sponsored by Deputy Speaker Ayala created robust quarterly reporting requirements regarding how many grievances are filed and the various ways they get resolved. However, there are some pretty crucial data points required by the law that are missing. So for non-grievable complaints, which include serious accusations like sexual assault and abuse, the law requires reporting on where those complaints are referred. That is currently not being reported. The law also requires reporting on the number of people in custody who submitted grievances. This information would be helpful in understanding how many individuals are filing multiple grievances. When will this issue be resolved in order to bring DOC in compliance with the law?
We... Sorry. So we are aware of the reporting structure at this time. We've realized that there are some adjustments that need to be made to the report. It's important to note that the operation and the data has evolved since the grievance since 2019, and we're actively working to address the reports.
Okay. The Charter also mandates that you provide this report and every other DOC report in a machine readable format, like a spreadsheet. And, you know, I think the council has repeatedly asked for these. And, you know, I think the council has repeatedly asked for these reports to be not PDFs. I mean, these are numbers, and in a PDF, obviously, if anybody's ever copied and pasted from a PDF into anything knows, it's actually pretty hellish. So, you know, can you commit to sending these reports in a spreadsheet? It would save us time. It's really burdensome for the staff we have here, the data teams that we have here, to, to go through all that. Can you commit today to providing a machine readable format like a spreadsheet?
OCGF will provide the data accordingly to our intergov team, and they will work with you guys accordingly.
Right, so you can't commit to providing a spreadsheet?
We can provide a spreadsheet.
That would be really helpful, thank you. And to be fair, our transcripts for these hearings are in PDF, so it's like the PDF is a nightmare for everybody on all fronts, so not necessarily just picking on you. Okay. I'm going to move on to sexual assault complaints. So last month, the news outlet Gothamist published a pretty extensive report that analyzed cases brought under the Adult Survivors Act and found that nearly 60% of the civil lawsuits in New York City State Supreme Courts were filed by people who alleged that they were sexually abused while in custody at Rikers Island. The 719 lawsuits include allegations of DOC staff groping people in custody, coercing them to engage in sex acts and acts of rape. And I just want to read the opening of that article to kind of bring the gravity of these allegations fully into the room. And I understand that they are allegations and there's a potential investigation underway. Jenny remembers, this is quote, "Jenny remembers trying to hide under the rough jail-issued seats when the Rikers Island guards would come for her in the middle of the night. She said she called out the names and ID numbers of women in the room, where she slept on a makeshift pillow of bundled clothing. Then she said the correction officers ordered the women to rise from their beds before leading them down a series of long hallways in silence. Quote, 'We just had to be kind of like soldiers, walking to where they were leading us,' she said. Quote, 'Once we passed through a door, everything was pitch black.' Jenny said the officers took the women to a dark room with benches, which was illuminated only by the occasional glow of a flashlight. They ordered the women to kneel and be quiet before forcing them to perform oral sex,' she said." Unquote. The details of this, of these allegations are pretty horrific, and many of the lawsuits claim that jail officials knew or should have known that these sexual allegations and assaults were occurring on their watch. This is why we're having this hearing, and this is why opportunities to safely file a grievance is so important. Pursuant to guidelines established in the Prison Rape Elimination Act, or PRIA, and adopted as BOC minimum standards, the department is supposed to complete a semi-annual report to evaluate sexual abuse and sexual harassment allegations made within the past six months. And I want to look at the data you produced in the last PREA report and compare it to what was reported in your quarterly reports on filed grievances. And I'm going to read slowly because it's dense numbers. So in the PRIA reports, from July 2022 to December 2022, you listed 132 allegations of sexual abuse and harassment from people in custody. While over the same six-month time period, in quarterly grievance reports, you stated that there were 682 grievances filed with a sexual assault or sexual abuse allegation. From January 2023 to June 2023, PRIA reports state that there were 114 allegations of sexual assault or sexual harassment, while grievance reports during the same time indicate there were 701 grievances filed with allegations of sexual abuse or sexual assault. So can you try and explain this discrepancy where the number of allegations of sexual assault and abuse that you list on the PRIA reports is significantly lower than the number of grievances filed on this issue?
I'd like to start by saying we take these matters seriously. When OCGF receives complaints of such nature of sexual misconduct, we task out the complaint to the Special Investigation Unit, in which I will defer to A.C. Levine, who oversees this.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Jonathan Levine, I'm the Assistant Commissioner, PRIA, for the New York City Department of Correction. And let me chime in on what Dr. Stafford just said. We share your concern that jails should be safe, and any form of behavior involving sexual misconduct, sexual harassment, and sexual abuse is unacceptable. And getting back to, just repeat the question, I want to make sure I give a firm answer on that.
I'll kind of, I'll try to summarize it. In the PREA reports, there's two different six-month periods we looked at. You're having significantly lower allegations than what is in the reports on your grievances filed. Almost like 500 per, per term that we're looking at, a difference. Where sexual abuse or sexual assault are both.
Okay, yes. Thank you for clarifying the question for me. What Dr. Stafford gives us, if I can go into the process slightly.
Please.
Dr. Stafford gets 311 calls and sends it to my PRIA investigation team as what they refer to as task IDs. Those task IDs are allegations made by persons in custody, whether they be against staff or whether they be against other persons in custody. The other, the other number that you quoted was from the Board of Correction Report, the 540 report. Am I correct? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
The Board of Correction 540 report documents the PRIA reportable cases. PRIA reportable cases is, there's a difference between a PRIA reportable case and an allegation. This was the total number of allegations that Dr. Stafford staff referred to my investigative team. And through our investigation, that, the number that you gave us was the number that falls into the category of being PRIA reportable. And those allegations have to be, meet certain criteria. Doesn't mean that we do not investigate them. And I want, that's why I wanted to bring this back a little bit and let you know that every single complaint that comes to my office is taken seriously, and it does get investigated. The categorization of PRIA reportable versus PRIA non-reportable is a difference, and there's a difference between the number of allegations we get as referred to PRIA reportable and PRIA non-reportable. And just for your clarification, anything in Penal Law 130, sex crimes, would be PRIA reportable. Anytime we have a person in custody going in and going to a hospital where a sexual assault evidence collection kit is prepared, PRIA reportable. Person retaliation, any form of retaliation, PRIA reportable, or repeated sexual harassment. Those are the categories of PRIA reportable. Doesn't mean there, there are other things that we have as called PRIA non-reportable. Those allegations do get investigated, they are taken seriously, but those are not categorized on the Board of Correction Report.
Okay. I, I understand that you're saying there's two different, there's a threshold for the PRIA reporting.
Correct. That threshold is established in the PRIA federal standards, yes.
I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to think about it in just like a, a basic definition. I guess I'm just trying to understand the, the, the level of threshold that one would just remain on a grievances filed report and one would be up. And I'll have to spend some time understanding that a little bit more, but thank you for clarifying the process. It's still quite a number of complaints. And like I said, even the two six-month periods that we looked at, we're talking about almost 500, 500 reports differential. So it just, it just feels like a stretch that not, that, that, that many, 500, would not be reaching a threshold.
Well, if I can just reiterate that, we do take every one of the complaints seriously, and they do get fully investigated.
Okay. Okay, a few more questions, and then I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. Are all allegations of sexual abuse or sexual assault being referred to the investigative, the investigation division? Are all allegations of sexual abuse or sexual assault being referred to the investigation division?
Yes. They, they do come through, they do come to my investigative unit, but they don't only come through 311. We are multiple ways an individual with, in custody. We employ many ways that they can make any of these allegations. 311 is our most prevalent form, over 80%. We do get referrals from our partners in CHS. We do get them from many legal services, attorneys, defender services. We also get them from other correctional facilities or other law enforcement, because when somebody may outcry when they go to state prison, federal, federal, any of the other institutions. So we do get on a regular basis outcries from persons that those would be in the past. But we do, those are the sources we get. We also get third party. We have people who call us up as third party.
So you're getting a lot from incoming, and they are being referred to you?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Do you, can you just say how many current pending investigations and ID that are, that are related to allegations of sexual assault by a staff member?
I don't have that for this, what time period are you looking for?
Current pending.
I don't have that information with me, but I'd be glad to get back to you.
I would love the follow-up on that.
Yes, I could.
Thank you. Just want to touch briefly, I know the Bronx District Attorney's Office has said that they are, you know, they've assembled a team of prosecutors to start reviewing these allegations. Have you started working with that office at all? Have they reached out to you?
They, we reach out to the Bronx District Attorney's Office on a daily basis. There is a Rikers Island Prosecution Bureau that's based on Rikers Island. We have a dedicated.
But are you, on this issue, are you, are you all starting to collaborate or work together?
She has reached out to our office for certain individual cases, yes.
Okay. Can you, can you let us know how you all are working? Can you let us know how you are working with, with the office already?
Very well, I, no, I just don't know. We get, we have a very good, we have a very good, I, I have and my staff has a very good relationship with the Bronx District Attorney's Office, and we cooperate fully in anything they need.
Okay.
We will assist them.
Okay. So just this morning, the Gothamist published another article detailing a pattern of sexual assault allegations made against jail medical staff. They report that most of the women who filed lawsuits against medical staff say they were assaulted during examinations, including during health screening and physical examination when a person arrives at Rikers Island. So I do have a couple of questions for CHS, and then I'll move on. But would it be typical for a health screening at intake to include an examination of a person's breasts or genitalia?
Thank you. So part of intake is to connect a health screening, they meet with nursing, they meet with medicine, potentially mental health. But we're really trying to gather basic information as you would, you know, at a first visit at a doctor's office. If it were clinically indicated that a patient required a breast exam, anything involving a private area, that would be a follow-up appointment. That wouldn't be conducted during the medical intake process. And I should note as well, at Rosie's, there is a chaperone policy in place. So there should always be a second staff member present outside of emergency medical evaluations. And if there isn't staffing that day, then it would be rescheduled to the appointment.
Okay. In one of those allegations, it was reported that a chaperone was present during that. So what training do chaperones receive to ensure they're acting as an adequate prevention tool in reporting abusive behavior?
Yeah, I should say all of our staff receive PRIA training. It's required of all new employees, and then every two years. So we are mandated reporters under PRIA. So any allegation or knowledge or reasonable belief that there has been a sexual assault, harassment, abuse, we do report that, and then that goes to the department. We don't engage in the investigation, but all of those cases are reported. If it is against CHS staff, it is also reported to the New York City Department of Investigation as well as the New York City Health and Hospitals Inspector General's Office. We also have multiple pathways for, as I mentioned in my testimony, for patients to communicate any concern to us.
Right. And, and just taking this, this one story, this one example in this story, I'm not asking you to comment specifically on this, this allegation, but using as an example, this is a woman who alleged that a chaperone was, was present when she was, they were sexually assaulted during a medical exam. They filed a grievance, but no one followed up with her. So this, this is a case that predates, obviously, this administration. But in a situation like that, what is being done to ensure between CHS and the PRIA unit within the department's Investigations Division, an allegation like this is taken seriously, investigated thoroughly, and if substantiated, people are held accountable? And how, how is it communicated back to an affected person that a process is happening and there has been an outcome?
Yeah, so I would just start by saying, well, as you mentioned, I can't speak to what happened under Horizon. You know, the article itself is very difficult to read, and when a medical provider abuses a patient, it is especially egregious. So we do have these policies and practices in place to protect our patients. So in an incident like, instance like that, when a complaint is filed, the patient should be brought to the clinic for an evaluation. They would receive referrals to mental health, additional medical care. If they, if there's trauma, in consultation with our emergency physicians, they may go out EMS to the hospital for a forensic examination. And then again, all cases are reported to the department for investigation. And patients can also call the health triage line to follow up on a case. We have a sexual abuse, or sexual assault advocacy team that actually meets with every person in custody, every patient who has made an allegation of sexual abuse, and we offer resources and additional follow-up appointments.
So how, how can it be that when someone files a grievance, they, they don't hear anything back? Because we don't really have, I think, insight into your grievance process. I think we have more reporting from DOC, but how, how would, if, if something happened, they filed a grievance, how does that get back to that person?
So we have a complaint process, just a little bit semantic, it's not so much grievance. But in that case, so it would go through patient relations, and so patient relations would reach out to the clinical and operations team in that facility, and then within 48 hours, they should be addressing the patient complaint. Of course, there's an additional layer for a sexual assault, where the patient must be brought to the clinic. And then any investigation would be handled by the department. So we would generally have patients call, they could call the health triage line, they could be brought back to clinic if they want, you know, additional information, or they could communicate that to the sexual assault advocacy team that is reaching out directly.
And to see, and my last question, I'm like going down the rabbit hole now, but does CHS do any reporting? Like who do you report your grievances to outside of your agency?
So we do track our complaints, that's not in, in official report, but we're, you know, happy to provide that more regularly if that is of interest.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think it would be helpful, just in the follow-up, a breakdown of your grievance process, because we have it pretty detailed here, and it would just be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to members who have questions. Come on, you have a question? Okay, wow, there's people online.
Good morning, thank you for being here. Thank you, Chair. Kind of going to jump around a little all over the place. Most of my questions are follow-ups to the Chair's questions. I just want to go back to the, the steps of the grievance process, those four steps that were articulated. So I, I just, I want to hone in on how long it takes, how many, specifically, how many days for a complaint, a complainant or petitioner to fully exhaust all four steps in the grievance system? You know, the, how many days for the complaint, step one, step two, step three, step four?
So it is our goal to make sure we do a thorough investigation, and so with the first resolution that the person in custody receives, they ought to receive it within seven days. When it goes to the next appeal, which would be the commandant or unit facility officer, they have five days to provide a response, which will be delivered by the OCGF staff. We no longer have the appeal option to the division chief, and then it goes directly to the CORC, the Central Office Review Committee. Committee, in which that is an independent thorough investigation. While it is our goal to make sure that the investigation is speedy, sometimes it requires a diff, additional, um, time. I can't provide an exact timeframe, but, uh,
What about an average and a median?
Average, I would say fourteen to sixteen days from the commanding officers', uh, response.
And how long would the commanding officers' response to?
Five, they have five days.
Those five days. Okay, so seven, five, you've cut out that third step, and then you're saying that the average is four, fourteen to sixteen?
Fourteen to sixteen days.
Days on that last step. Now, you had said that, um, there, or it was testified earlier that, uh, a large portion of these never, uh, get appealed. So how many individuals fully exhaust all four, all of these steps?
It is a small percentage. I don't have the exact number. We can provide that. Um, but a majority of our persons in custody do not appeal all of their complaints.
And in your opinion, what do you attribute that to?
They don't wish to move forward. The option is provided to them on the form. O C G S staff, when they're conducting their tours and providing the disposition, they share that they do have access to the appeal process.
Uh, but you, you all, I mean, there was testimony earlier that, like, that petitioners don't get notified in the cases where they're rejected. So I don't know how, I, I don't know how we're lump, like leaping from people just don't want to appeal when I'm not clear how they know that to appeal.
The appeal, the complaint process is included in the person in custody handbook, and it's also published in the housing areas. When persons in custody do file a grievable complaint or a non grievable complaint via the paper-based system, they will receive an outcome. If the complaint is rejected, they are notified. If the complaint is non grievable and submitted electronically, they will receive either no action or, I mean, uh, no response, or an action will be implemented. So they are very much aware, uh, made of, aware of the process if the matter is grievable and.
So I, I have two things that I want to address on, on that. One, I think that we're getting very different communications from incarcerated individuals and their attorneys and advocates as to whether they're actually getting notified of this. I was really blown away to hear that, I'm just gonna give a quick example, New York County Defender Services, which shout out because I used to work there, um, has two full time people working on just these issues. And they have virtually never encountered someone in custody like that, that was able to exhaust those steps. They aren't able to do that on behalf of their clients, which I think is actually a, a problem. Um, but in terms of the person, the, even the categorization, right? Like, New York City is an outlier on how they categorize, um, grievable and non grievable offenses. And to give you an example of just that, it's different from New York State where it, and how they categorize these things. In D C. and Massachusetts, it's also different. Right? A sample of fifteen hundred grievances over three years in Massachusetts, only eleven percent of those were rejected as non grievable. So I think there's a fundamental problem with how, uh, they're being categorized currently. Uh, and then with that larger percentage of cases that are, are dropping into that non grievable, that process is so opaque. I mean, I have a series of questions just about, uh, what, what happens when you go down the non grievable track, but it just is, it's not, can I have a couple of extra minutes? Cool. It's, it's just not, it, I mean, the, the answer is just not tracking with the lived reality. Um, and then my, my, I have a question now. You had mentioned that with the new system that came online in January, there was electronic public access to the outcomes of, uh, of these complaints. But my understanding is that when somebody goes to try to access that, there's no details. It just simply says resolved or pending, which doesn't really leave the person in a position to do the kind of advocacy or understand what's happening to be able to, to properly take the next steps.
So the question is?
Well, so the question is, like, I mean, I mean, how are they, how is, is that a suff, how do you find that to be a sufficient way of saying, whoa, this is like really open, transparent, public access when people get one of two words, resolved or pending, but no information on how it was resolved, or like where in the process it is in that pending?
Well, I'm happy to share that the grievance operation has evolved greatly since it's been implemented. We do provide the definition of what the status is, which, whether it's abated, resolved. There's a definition that is provided on the public facing platform once they input, input their number. We continue to look through ways to ensure our process is transparent and the outcome is.
So what's the definition of resolved?
I'm sorry?
What's the definition of resolved?
That it was addressed within policy, a departmental policy. That is all the information that we will be able to provide.
Okay, okay. I mean, that, that.
To the public, yes.
I don't find that to be transparent. I appreciate that there's, that y'all are thinking about a process, um, for how to, to, to change how you do this. And again, the New York City Department of Corrections really appears to be an outlier on how other correctional systems handle these things. Um, but in rethinking that process, who are you consulting with outside of D O C?
We, at this point, we're consulting with one another internally. We haven't reached out to other.
All right. So do you plan on consulting maybe groups of incarcerated individuals on the process? Are you planning on consulting the, the various public defense organizations in, in the city on the, on the process? They seem like probably pretty important stakeholders when it comes to making this, uh, a, a system that, that produces the kinds of justice and results that y'all are, are trying to achieve.
We're open to recommendations, and so I will align internally with applicable leadership to see how we can move forward with that.
Thank you, thank you.
Mercedes, uh, Councilmember Narcisse, you had a question?
Yes. Um, thank you, Chair. Thank you, and good morning for being here. I try to multitask and listen to you at the same time. So, um, for my question, what specific mechanisms are in place to handle, um, complaints and grievances from individuals in custody regarding healthcare services?
When complaints of that related to medical are received by O C G S, we review the complaint and we, uh, task it to the Health Affairs Division. I can defer to D C. Saunders for how the complaint matter is addressed.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair and committee members. So when we receive a three one one complaint, we review it to determine the type of complaint. Is it purely, um, a C S S, a C H S matter, or is it, uh, an, an instance that involves D O C? And so if it's, uh, if it's purely a C H S matter, we will send it over to our colleagues in C H S to, to address. If it's an issue that involves D O C as well, then we will, uh, refer not only to C H S, but also the local facility leadership to make sure that the, the issue is investigated.
Do you have a statistics on the amount of complaints made regarding healthcare services, whether both?
Yes. Uh, hi, Councilmember. So complaints that come in specific to healthcare, uh, so I reference in my testimony, so those would, uh, be routed through our Patient Relations Department. Uh, so I have data on last calendar year. Uh, so we received, uh, four thousand six hundred forty three complaints about health services. Um, and so the way that is addressed is that a, an R N investigator would contact the clinical team, the operations team in the facility where the patient is housed to address, uh, within forty eight hours, the patient's concern. Uh, it's also investigated to identify any areas for improvement within C H S.
What is the most common complaint regarding healthcare services?
So we receive complaints about medication, about access to care, and about quality of care. Um, those really, you know, run the gamut, uh, just as any of us in the community, our concerns about healthcare. It may be, uh, the dosage of a prescription. Um, if it's around an access issue, that's something that would be addressed on the local level. So, uh, the clinical team, the operations team, uh, would work with D O C leadership, um, potentially the clinic captain, the tour commander, um, and can, um, discuss access that way. Um, you may be aware, we produce a call down list every morning to the department for patients who should be brought to the clinic for routine care and follow up care appointments. Um, that's separate from calls made to the health triage line. Um, so those calls, when a clinic appointment is made, um, the aim is to see that patient that day or, or within twenty four hours, depending on clinical need. Uh, so if a patient is experiencing, you know, a lot of back pain, that would be that day. Um, if a patient, you know, has a rash and no other, you know, concerning symptoms, that could be twenty four hours. And then there are also triggers, um, as the nurse is putting it into the health record if it is a medical emergency.
Last time I was, um, opened my visit, the complaint that I was hearing directly, it's, um, when their appointment come, it's just like they don't have no help, no assistance to get to those clinics. Is that, how are you working on that? Because I had no last hearing. Um, I, I heard that, um, the effort was gonna be made, because when we're talking about health, I don't know if you know my background, I, I'm a registered nurse. So when people are complaining, because the problem that I have the most, let me be honest, when people's health is not being taken care of wherever they are, they're coming back to those communities, and some of the communities don't have access to healthcare, period. So it become worse. It's just like, we're not spending our dollars wisely, because is, is it cut, I mean, cost effective? When you come back to the community and you come back worse, it's just like not helping anyone. So it is, it, as a nurse, it bothers me, like, when folks are in your care and they're not getting access to healthcare, because without health, with nothing, and on top of it, it's not wise to be paying wise in a way, like, you don't spend the time to give the person the care, and when they come out, it's a dollar foolish. So, um, how, do we have staff, I don't, Chair, can I finish my thought? Do you have enough kind of staff now that encourage it? Because we're going through, uh, a time that's different than ever before, because we've never been to a pandemic. And we, my experience, a lot of folks, uh, have different issues that prevent them from actually access the care. Either they had, they get up in the morning, the, the mindset is not all together. So do we actually making the effort to get those folks to this appointment?
Yeah. So as a public health person, I definitely appreciate your comments. And, uh, while we wouldn't consider jail an ideal place to receive medical or mental health care, we do view it as an opportunity because people coming into the city's custody tend to be vulnerable populations. More than half of our patients have mental health needs. Uh, many have substance use needs, histories of trauma. So we do look at it as an opportunity to provide care, and then hopefully, uh, the continuity of care once they're back in the community. Um, in terms of access to care, like literal production to the clinic, I'll, uh, turn to D C. Saunders.
Thank you so much for that question. So we, we, we agree that all people in custody should have access to high quality medical care. And we work diligently with our partners in C H S, uh, to ensure that people in custody are produced to their clinic encounters if, if they choose to go. Uh, for those that do miss a clinic encounter because there's no officer, uh, available to escort them, D O C and C H S work together to produce that individual as quickly as possible, either later in the day or possibly the following day, within that twenty four hour cycle. So I think we've made really good progress in ensuring that staff are available to escort individuals to the clinic. In twenty twenty two, uh, there were approximately six thousand instances of missed clinic encounters due to a lack of escort out of approximately, oh, over five hundred thousand scheduled encounters. And so that was about five point two percent of all non-production. Uh, we've made great progress in twenty twenty three. That number dropped significantly to approximately thirty nine hundred out of over, um, six hundred or so thousand scheduled clinic encounters. And so that means that the lack of escort, uh, issue occurred less than one percent of all scheduled clinic encounters for calendar year twenty twenty three. This year in twenty twenty four, the data from January and February shows that our operations continue to improve with, with approximately four hundred and twenty two missed clinic and, and encounters as a result of lack of escort. Again, that represents less than one percent of all scheduled clinic encounters year to date. So we are making great strides.
And I do appreciate that. Um, continue to be mindful, because those are the same, I mean, same, uh, folks that are coming back to community that underserved, and it keep going down and down, because you receiving people in a community that's not functional, they sick. And then it comes like a revolving door for all of us, like we in a full cycles of people that's not well. And, um, the city, we have to keep it healthy in order to move forward, because if people are sick in our city, we all sick. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Shawna Bray for joining us. I'm gonna, uh, back up just a little bit. I actually had a question for you, Mr. Levine. Um, based on what you, uh, your testimony, based on what's available on the department's website, um, D O C, it looks like D O C has not issued any of the required, uh, five forty or P R A. Reports, um, which are due to the public every six months since twenty twenty two. Is that correct? Or, um, when will, when will that be updated?
They have been updated. Uh, they should, they should be coming very, very soon. I know they have been completed, they have been reviewed.
Is there, is there just a reason why they're not publicly available? Okay. Um, do you know when they will be available?
They are? Wow. Oh, I am, I apologize. I'm not a tech person.
Okay.
I, I'm told that they have been uploaded. Is that the turn to the D O C website?
Okay, we'll check. Um, we'll come back. So I want to move on to questions. I, I do have a few questions, um, around medical and mental health grievances. Um, I know Councilmember Narcisse touched on some of them, so I'm trying to skip over to some things we haven't touched about. Um, each month, the council receives a report on missed medical appointments. And in February, the most recent month we have data for, the total number of missed appointments was eleven thousand two hundred and forty six. Uh, this is a pretty staggering number, and I know the previous commissioner attributed a lot of this to what he saw as the overscheduling of medical appointments. However, in February, that's the, the month that we're talking about for the data, two thousand people missed medical appointments, uh, and the reason was listed as other. And in your report, other, uh, includes instances where, uh, someone in custody chooses to instead attend a work assignment, law, library, school, religious service, or commissary, when maximum clinic capacity has been reached, when no escort is available, or when movement is limited due to a lockdown, search, or alarm. So can you provide any context for how often clinical capacity is reached?
So I don't have clinical capacity data. Uh, so I think in terms of the, the volume, the, the, uh, services that we schedule, you know, we do schedule a lot of appointments. Uh, in my testimony, I mentioned the four hundred thirty three thousand, uh, which we all, we do believe are clinically indicated. Uh, but we do recognize that this requires, you know, close coordination and partnership with the department, uh, because patients do need to be escorted from their housing areas to the clinic, um, outside of some of the care that we provide on the therapeutic housing units. Uh, so I can follow up on specifics. Um, you know, it is coordination around, um, you know, when our providers are available and when, uh, the D O C escorts are available.
That would be great, just because it's, it's, as a part of the definition, just understanding, like, what, like, how often is clinical capacity reached? That would be really great to have in the follow up. Um, uh, let's see, the, in, in calendar year twenty twenty three, and so far in twenty 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 four, um, this is for D O C, how many missed medical appointments were due to no escort being available to take someone to the clinic? Even, even just in a year, how many, um, folks are missing their medical appointments because there is not an escort available to take them to the clinic?
So in twenty twenty two, it appears that approximately six thousand instances of missed clinic encounters were due to lack of escort. Uh, in calendar year twenty twenty three, uh, approximately thirty nine hundred, uh, scheduled clinic encounters were missed due to lack of escort. And that's less than one percent of all scheduled clinic encounters.
Okay. And for both of your agencies, do either of you track how often a facility lockdown, search, or alarm results in a missed medical appointment?
So the department continues to escort individuals to clinic appointments during?
No, I, I know, I know. And it's just, it's just, in relationship to tracking specifically, when there's a lockdown, if you do collect that data or segregate it out, um, in terms of how many medical appointments are missed due to a search, a lockdown, or an alarm? in terms of how many medical appointments are missed due to a search, a lockdown, or an alarm?
So between January and February of this year, approximately 300 scheduled appointments were missed due to a lockdown. And again, that represents less than 1% of the total scheduled appointments.
Noted.
Only 1%, of the non-productions.
Okay. So, you know, we hear reports that lockdowns can last days. In fact, in the lead up to a hearing on education last year, we were told that RNDC, the facility that holds young people on Rikers Island, had been locked down for days. And so it'd be extremely concerning if there was no access due to a protracted period of lockdown. And that's why I asked earlier about how long does lockdown happen? And his phone, you know, what are the justifications for shutting down phone services? So if you're in lockdown for 10 days and no one can file a complaint, there's a medical appointment being missed or you can't file a complaint through 311 because the phone access has been shut off for 10 days. In this particular, using this particular instance, like this is a pretty serious, you know, violation of people's access to support or whatever life sustaining, you know, services that they need. So.
And I would just mention, our emergency care will respond on seeing if there is a medical emergency, regardless of any lockdown status. But I, your point is appreciated.
Right. But as you know, and as we've seen in multiple situations, including fatalities, things might not be going according to protocol. And certainly if there's no ability to make a phone call, you're not going to be able to respond to emergency. Okay, moving on. The department and CHS recently gave presentations at BOC meetings to describe the differences between sick call, where a person in custody is requesting non-emergency or medical or mental health care, and other CHS initiated appointments. Can you clarify whether a person in custody can make a sick call request through an officer in their housing unit?
So the answer to that is yes. A person who wishes to go to sick call can simply ask the officer to be taken. And they also have the availability of using house phones to call the health triage line as well to make a scheduled appointment.
And if a person makes a request for medical care through the sick call process, how soon can they expect to be seen by a provider?
So for sick call, that should be that day, where the department escorts them to the clinic. For calls, I mentioned earlier for the health triage line, so the goal is to schedule that day as well. So it would be put on the call down list, the nurse would that day, or 24 hours for a less urgent medical condition.
And do you track any data on the average time between when a request for care is made and when a person is seen?
So I could get you the time between when this appointment is scheduled. Of course, you know, a patient for whatever reason may not make that first scheduled appointment. But I can see what data is available.
Okay. It would be great to know what, what tracking you all are doing. Okay, so for DOC and CHS, missed medical appointments seem to continue to be a pretty perpetual problem. In 2022, stemming from a class action lawsuit brought by Brooklyn Defender Services and the Legal Aid Society, DOC was found in contempt of court for its failure to ensure people in custody have access to medical services. I understand there are issues with overscheduling, with lots of automatic and required appointments, bloating the numbers. However, has either DOC or CHS made any formal effort to categorize and track types of appointments and make sure that production for urgent medical appointments is prioritized?
So we do track, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. We do track non-production and the reasons for, for non-production. But I want you to rest assured that any individual in our custody that needs access to urgent medical care is provided that care. They simply need to go to the, the housing area officer and request to be taken. And if that officer notices that an individual is in distress, that person is, is taken to, to the clinic immediately. Or if that person is in extreme distress, they would activate a medical emergency, in which case our colleagues from CHS would send an emergency medical response team to, to the site.
I understand what the, what your policy and protocol and intentions are, but obviously that's not actually what's playing out. My question was, is there any formal effort been made to categorize and track types of appointments?
So we do track the types of appointments. You're referencing the production to the?
Production to urgent medical appointments.
So we schedule, you know, routine and follow-up care according to, you know, the community standard of care. The calls that go into health triage, those would be that day or within 24 hours. And then emergency care would be addressed immediately.
Okay. Our analysis of the available data on grievances showed that proportion of complaints coming from people housed in mental observation units has been steadily rising since 2020. This is concerning because mental observation units are the least intensive housing option for people who have been diagnosed with serious mental illness. And according to testimony DOC provided in October last year, mental health observation units had the capacity to house 496 people. Of that population, there were over 1,000 grievances filed from January to March of this year. So I was wondering if you could break down the nature of both the grievable and non-grievable complaints that are coming from individuals in mental observation units? Or even just the top three categories of complaints?
Hi. So there, the complaints fluctuate. And for persons in custody in specialized housing areas, they typically complain about where they are housed. So I would say the top three complaints are medical, H&amp;H-related, environmental, and sexual misconduct.
Medical, H&amp;H-related, environmental, and what was the last one?
Sexual misconduct.
Sexual misconduct. And, and to clarify, yeah, we're just starting, to clarify, environmental, can you, can you break that down a little bit more? We had talked about it in our prep a little bit to wanting to understand.
Environmental is directly related to facility cleanliness. And so those complaints are tasked out to our environmental unit to address whatever facility cleanliness is a concern.
Okay. So for CHS and DOC, can you provide examples of concrete actions taken to address these issues identified in grievances filed by people in the MO units?
So any trend that OCGS sees, we review the data, we identify key issues, and we forward it to the applicable unit to implement appropriate action, and they take their steps accordingly.
Okay. So one, your top three, one of them is sexual abuse or of a sexual allegation nature. How are you all handling that, if it's a top three?
Once OCGS receives the complaint, we notify applicable leadership of the trends to make them aware. And then it's to inform their plans of action. I can defer to AC Levine for how that is dressed.
When we get a complaint from, well, let me just back up. We have a supervisor on duty in my prior investigation unit from 0700 hours to 2200 hours. When we get a complaint routed to us from OCGS through the 311 system, we, we look at it and we actually transcribe it. We will then assign two investigators who get dispatched to the facility to interview the victim or the caller. Simultaneously, before they leave our office to go to the facility, we, my tour commander will call the facility tour commander and let them know that we are going to investigate whatever the, you use sexual abuse allegation. And we would identify the person in custody. And we would request that the facility take the necessary action to, to remove that individual to the clinic and also make arrangements to rehouse that person so they wouldn't be put back into the same situation with their violator or perpetrator.
And what's the time period on that? Like what's the average turnaround?
We have, well, I'm going to give you the prior standards are 72 hours. We respond within 24 hours. If we get something that's serious, we will prioritize it. But in any situation, we make immediate, we will take immediate steps to help ensure the safety of the caller and the person in custody.
And, and for the, the trends that are emerging, the top three complaints in the mental observation units, I mean, is this consistent? Are these top three consistent over multiple years? Or is this a new trend? For example, is, are allegations involving sexual abuse or assault sustained trends in complaints from these units?
I would say that the complaints continue to fluctuate. Maybe it would be the top three or the top five, but they do fluctuate for these specialized housing areas.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's just wildly concerning to have a top three complaint be sexual assault and abuse, particularly coming from mental observation units. And I haven't heard, I've heard, you know, the logistical steps to process a grievance, but I haven't really heard what is the, you know, systemic or operational change that, you know, ends the trend in the unit? Or across the island at large? So I'm going to move on to?
Good morning, ma'am. Chief Van Berge. So to answer that question as far as system change is that, first of all, the agency has a zero tolerance policy for sexual assault, harassment, or sexual misconduct. And we will prosecute to the fullest extent of the law. That's number one. Number two, each, or all departmental staff that eyewitness is notified and/or is told of any sexual misconduct, harassment, assault, that person in custody is removed immediately from their dormitory bed or they sell and place, in place in a secure location. And the supervisor will be contacted escort him or her to the clinic to be evaluated. Once they're in the clinic, we then will immediately notify SIU prior unit as well as secure that area for any evidence preservation. And also we will remove the person in custody to another unit. So with that said, we do take it very, very seriously. We do act immediately should, during a tour, any of those actions are happening, eyewitness, told, or informed.
Like I said, I appreciate the, the breakdown of the logistical procedures. But what I'm suggesting is that, I mean, in light of over 700 allegations, you've got a trend in your mental observation unit. Also, staff, female officers have been assaulted. So there is an issue here on the island where sexual assault and abuse is systemic. It is loudly speaking to all of us just in the data and the numbers. And the grievance process, although there are some timely measures in it, is not necessarily, there's not a positive feedback loop here coming to, to stop a situation that's happening on a systemic level. So that's what I'm trying to get at. But I'm going to move on to complaints about DOC staff. So in our review of the data since 2020, nearly a quarter of all non-grievable complaints had to do with a DOC staff member. Depending on the nature of the allegation, complaints related to staff are referred to the investigation division or a facility commanding officer for review. When a person in custody makes a complaint against staff, it's a very sensitive situation. And we've heard a lot of stories of subtle and not so subtle ways in which retaliation occurs. DOC's grievance directive states that no reprisals by staff of any kind shall be taken against an inmate for good faith use of the grievance and request program. However, this is, you know, clearly there's been a breakdown. So when a facility commander is informed of a grievance filed that alleges improper behavior by a member of their staff, how are they instructed to handle that investigation? And specifically, how do they ensure that their investigation will not result in a person in custody being identified as having filed that grievance?
I believe you were, when you, when we get these allegations, they're not, when they get called into central operations, they're called in as just confidential allegations. And the identity of the person making that call, that allegation, is not identified. It is identified to us when we get it. When we get it, we will call back the person calling it in, the tour commander of the facility. They will identify it to us over the phone, and that's how we will, then we will direct them. There's something that we have called the separation order. We will then issue a separation order that will take the violator away from the victim.
And has DOC ever imposed any formal or informal discipline against an officer for engaging in active retaliation against a person in custody who filed a grievance?
I don't have that specific information available, but in the last two years, my unit has, we have, we refer acts of misconduct by our officers to our trials division. We have 53 cases currently in the trials division against officers.
Out of how many people?
I don't have the specific breakdown. I do know that the number is 53 from January 1 of 2022 to right now in 2024. So there have been 53 cases that we refer to them for violation of, different violations of different types of rules and regulations.
I think it would be, in the, in the follow-up, it would be good to, to hear, you know, since maybe 2022, how many data on how many disciplinary actions have been taken, formal or informal, against officers who have engaged in retaliation in the follow-up? We'll send it over.
Okay, yes.
As part of the consent judgment, in the Nunez case, the department was required to develop and implement an early warning system to identify staff members whose conduct warrants corrective action and provide additional guidance and mentorship to those officers. Are grievances filed against staff members reviewed to help determine which staff members might benefit from additional support?
Once a complaint is received about a staff member, it is forwarded to the special investigation unit to handle accordingly. So I will defer to AC Levine on how that information is shared internally.
Whenever we get, I also run the misconduct arm, it's called the intelligence team. Whether it be a prior allegation against the member or whether it be any other allegation, our first responsibility is we call the Department of Investigation. There's a DOI duty team that works 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So anytime we get an allegation against any staff member, whether it be civilian, whether it be contracted, someone like who works there fixing things, someone from CHS, we have a responsibility and we refer that immediately to the Department of Investigation. They will review it, and after they review it, they will either give it back to us or they will take it and give us what they call a stand-down order. So there is the review process to see if there were, say, recidivist staff members committing these acts.
Okay. And do you know how many people are, you know, I don't know how it looks on the backend for you all, but do you know how many, let's say, staff members are kind of in your early warning system currently?
I, I don't have that information. That would be something DOI, DOI does keep that form of data. So that would be, they would be the risk people to let you know who their, would I be safe to say recidivists are?
And then I, it's, I know there's like guidance and mentorship, but can you tell, can you just explain a little bit more what that looks like? What are you providing? Someone's on an early warning system. Maybe they've got a couple grievances filed against them. What specifically is being provided to that individual that is course corrective?
Well, most of that would be done by the, our training unit. But I can let you know that my prior compliance team does, we do facility training. We do supervisory training. And when the officers come every two years for their, they have to do a refresher, prior refresher, my team does, does the, I guess, they're the facilitators of the training. So that is what my team does for training officers in this manner.
Yes, ma'am. Chief Van Berge. Also, we have EISS, the early warning that you were speaking about as well. That unit also handles that as well, any, any issues concerning that. And what they do, they take the, the information from the facilities. They review it to make sure that, you know, the member? sure that, you know, the member, whenever the member service is in, make arrangements for the member service to have a mentor or monitor them. So that, that's also available as well.
And do you know how long that, that kind of period of being engaged with this early warning system can go for? Like, what's an average, someone who's exhibited signs that triggers this? Like, how long are they a part of some kind of program?
Well, I don't have the, the correct number or the correct data. However, it could be from any of the time that trials and litigation and that unit comes together and say, the member service will negotiate plea agreements from here to here, and then that EISS will handle it to, when they start to finish. So I don't have the data to tell you exactly how long, and it's only case-by-case basis.
Okay. I'm gonna open up again for questions. Councilmember Caban has questions.
Yes, thank you. Just, just very quickly, a follow-up is, are accused officers suspended while an investigation is ongoing?
We have suspended officers during, yes, we have done that.
What, what number or percentage of that over a period of time? And is there a breakdown of like, how you make that determination? Like, is it based on the, the nature of the allegation? Is it based on the person's history of being accused of misconduct or abuse? How is that determined?
During our preliminary investigation, if we believe that we have a founded sexual abuse case, and usually through the victim's statement plus other evidentiary video, phone call, outcry, other witness interviews, we do witness interviews of other persons in custody who are in the housing area. And if they corroborate, we have suspended people.
Well, but based on that, it sounds like it would be a period of time between an accusation and whether you decide at some point in the investigation that an accusation is credible enough that you decide to suspend someone. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, Chief Van Buren, ma'am. So if it's a preliminary investigation and you can't make a final determination of that determination, the member service can be modified and taken out of the facility and placed on modified status. And then when the...
Is modified, modified is different than a suspension, correct?
Correct, ma'am. They no longer is, are assigned to a facility. It's assigned to an area with just modified officers. So it's not like if we, when we have the member service remain in the facilities until a final determination or for final outcome. So we will modify the member and suspend, or we just will suspend the member, and that is determined on a case-by-case basis.
And are they suspended with or without pay?
If you, well, that's what would be without pay, all right? So with modified, you still pay, but you're, you're modified until a final determination. If it's the captain, if it's during the week, we have to suspend, we will suspend with pay from, if it's during the week, we have to immediately suspend. A supervisor can be suspended only on a Sunday, 001 hours, seven-day increments. So at times, I did, I do not have the data in front of me if any of that has transpired as far as the number of supervisors versus captain thereafter.
So can we, I mean, can we get that data set? Like, I am curious to know out of, over the past year, for example, what percentage of accusations resulted in a suspension, and what was the average length between that accusation and the moment of suspension? How many times were, is, was an accusation determined to be founded and credible, but an employee was not suspended and vice versa? Like, there's just a whole data set here that would be really helpful and illuminating about people's experiences. And then my, my last thing is just a comment. I just, I found it really interesting that you mentioned recidivist staff members, and I just feel like that's something that shouldn't exist. I think that if you are a recidivist in abusing the people that you're supposed to be keeping safe and protected in our correctional facilities, you probably shouldn't have that job.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember Caban. Okay, I'm getting down, we're getting there. I just have a few more questions, and then I think we will switch panels, I believe. So according to the available data, over the last four years, there has been a significant increase in grievances filed related to commissary operations. In fact, there appears to be a spike in grievances related to the commissary in April 2022, right around the time that the contract began with the Keefe Group to operate the commissary. Commissary grievances post-2022 continue to be higher than they were previously. Along with this alarming grievance data, there was also an investigation conducted by the news outlet, The City, which exposed the high prices and poor service by the Keefe Group. And last month, the Comptroller's Office cited a myriad of problems to justify their decision to reject a contract renewal with Keefe. Despite all this, the DOC recently decided to move ahead in awarding the Keefe Group another $33 million to continue running the commissary. So my questions are, we've received a lot of anecdotal information about people receiving expired or incomplete commissary orders with little access to recourse. When a grievance is filed that is related to the commissary, how does DOC address the problem with the Keefe Group? Do you follow up to ensure the issue is resolved?
Commissary complaints that are received, when any time there's a new operation, it is expected that there is, it takes time for the operation to be familiarized by the persons in custody. Since the relationship with the Keefe vendor, OCGS has monitored the complaint trends, monitored the frequency. We have had initially meetings once a month to discuss some of the concerns of the persons in custody that we were seeing. As the trend, as it trends downward, we have, have meetings maybe quarterly to address some of the concerns. Most recently, we saw a trend in expired items or just not having packages delivered. We spoke with leadership of commissary, and they're actively working to address it. This happened within the last 45 days.
And when you say you were having those meetings, that was with who? Keefe or with folks in custody?
So the meeting is with the leadership who managed the day-to-day operation of it to see where the concern is. Keefe, the conversation has not been directly with Keefe, with OCGS. It's my understanding that our internal leaders that oversee commissary have brought our concerns to the Keefe vendor.
And just from my understanding, particularly related to expired food, if, is expired food arriving onsite expired, or is it expiring while being onsite? I'm, I'm just trying to understand if people who are running the commissary day-to-day aren't, aren't clocking that.
It is my understanding that deliveries are done in a timely fashion and on the scheduled days. From my experience and what I've observed, it's when the package is received by the person in custody.
Okay. So as part of the Comptroller's letter justifying the decision to reject the contract renewal with the Keefe Group, he cited the department's failure to follow the city's procurement to conduct annual performance reviews, and said this indicates that the agency, the vendor's performance when affirming its responsibility. How do you justify renewing this contract when people in custody have been increasingly raising concerns about how the commissary is being operated?
Good afternoon. We're reviewing that at this time, and we cannot provide a response to that question at this time, but we will circle back with you.
And when, how, how, what's the timeline on a response?
Can you give a closer date where we can provide you a response of when that's timeline?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Can we provide you that by close of the day when we can respond?
Oh, by close of day?
To your timeline.
Okay, understood.
Not saying that we give a response to your question.
No, but at the end of the day, you will let me know when we could get a response.
Correct.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, in the DOC Commissioner's letter to the Comptroller's Office, she asserted that DOC has constantly monitored the vendor's performance, and DOC maintains the ability to reject or accept the vendor's listed price for commissary items. Can you provide the committee with an example of actions you've taken on behalf of people in custody to remedy issues with the vendor's performance or request price adjustments?
We add that on there as well.
At the end of the day?
To provide you a time to respond to your question.
A time for a response. Love that. It's a new line. Quick question, how many people work at OCGS? What's the head count?
My apologies. Currently, we have 27 budgeted lines.
And how many grievance coordinators do you have?
We have 13 non-uniform staff.
Okay. Okay, I just have a few more questions related to voting.
I'm sorry?
I have a few more questions related to voting. So are you aware of anyone generally filing a grievance related to not having access to voting?
I cannot confirm or deny that we've received complaints related to voting. I can circle, we can circle back with you.
Okay. If there's a, yeah, it would, it would be helpful to know if there's a clear process for filing a grievance for someone who feels like they've been denied their ability to vote. Obviously, it's a, it's a big year. It's an important year. And so folks who are on Rikers, who are empower, who have the right to vote certainly should have access to the poll. And so it would be really important to understand if there's a process for, for filing a grievance against that.
Understood.
Are people informed of their voting rights while they are in DOC custody?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you aware of anyone receiving ballots through the mail?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
Do folks, do people in custody, have you heard of people in custody receiving ballots in the mail and being able to vote by mail?
I cannot confirm or deny that, but I will get back with you.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Caban for one, another round of question.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of the questions for, around voting. Said, you said people are aware of their right to vote. How do you do that? What does that look like?
The person in custody are aware of their right to vote, it starts off by when, by it's located during the new admission process, when we have a sign, the sign as far as right to vote is located in the housing areas, right to vote, as well as the new, as I stated, new admission process. A new admission process when they're coming into the facilities as well.
I, I know that the Legal Aid Society did a survey of a number of their clients, asking them whether they were given materials, saw materials, had access to ballots when it came time to vote, and the results of that survey were, didn't tell a story of, not even close to a majority of the folks knowing that they could vote or have access. So I think there needs to still be a good deal of, of work done there. They've repeatedly made, made requests to have a, a voting site on Rikers Island. What's DOC's position on that? Would you support there being a voting site on Rikers Island to make voting more accessible?
We will look into that recommendation and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think those are all my questions for you all. I think we do have some, we do have follow-up items. I don't know if we've actually received follow-up items from the last, from the executive, the preliminary budget hearing. So, you know, we're still waiting for the last follow-up, and hopefully we could get this follow-up in a more timely manner. I know you're rolling your eyes, but, I mean, this is like public information. This is an opportunity for people to understand what's happening in these agencies. So, sorry to inconvenience everybody, but we do need the follow-up information. And there are some non-compliance issues that we've discussed, and it would be great, we'd love, can't wait to get those reports in spreadsheet format. Love me some Excel. And looking forward to hearing from you by the end of the day, from when we will hear about a timeline for some other things. Thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I think we're gonna take like a 10-minute break, and then we'll bring up BOC. Thank you.[1498.86] Okay, we're going to start our panel from the Board of Correction. I will now just introduce our first panel of administrative witnesses and ask the committee counsel to swear them. So with us, we have today, from the Board of Correction, Jasmine George Yilla, I'm so sorry if I'm butchering that, Executive Director, Melissa Centron Hernandez, General Counsel, Barbie Melendez, Director of Public Accountability, and Barte Bailey, Director of Violence Prevention. Great name. And I will now turn it to the committee counsel to swear you in.
Okay. If you could all please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to council member questions? Noting for the record, all the witnesses answered affirmatively. You may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Nurse and members of the New York City Council Committee on Criminal Justice. I am Jasmine Georges Yilla, Executive Director of the New York City Board of Correction. I'm joined today by BOC's General Counsel, Melissa Centron Hernandez, our Director of Public Accountability and Oversight, Barbie Melendez, and our Director of Violence Prevention, Bart Bailey. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Despite a lack of resources, BOC continues to carry out critical, independent oversight of the city's jails. The board has monitoring staff assigned to each jail, serving as the board's eyes and ears, and identifying systemic issues that impact people in custody and staff. BOC receives complaints directly from individuals in custody and New York City Department of Corrections staff through various channels, including phone calls, emails, visits to our website or office, and in-person during BOC staff's daily tours in the jails. Our staff is charged with investigating and resolving issues that are brought to their attention, including issues with the DOC grievance system. My testimony today identifies certain systemic shortcomings in the grievance process. Our goal is to shed light on these issues to prevent their recurrence. A person in custody can file a grievance by filling out a request for grievance slip, completing a grievance statement form that should be available in their housing area, or by writing their grievance on any available piece of paper. All jails are required to make these forms available to people in custody. However, paper grievance forms are rarely readily available in the housing areas. Furthermore, the locked grievance boxes where these forms are submitted are often located in restricted areas, making them difficult for people in custody to access independently. Many facilities have only one box, making it inconvenient for submission of a paper grievance. Alternatively, a person in custody may call 311 to file their grievance electronically. These grievances are logged by the 311 operator, bypassing barriers such as needing access to a corridor to reach a grievance box in the jails. Grievances received through 311 are reviewed by the department's Office of Constituent and Grievance Services, or OCGS, and forwarded to the staff at the relevant facility for grievance review. Of the 41,079 grievances filed in calendar year 2023, 36,669 were electronic, and 4,410 were on paper. This trend continues in 2004, in 2024. OCGS reports that out of nearly 9,200 grievances filed between January 2024 and March 2024, approximately 78% were filed through 311, while only 10% were filed using the grievance box. This suggests that calling 311 is a preferred method to file a grievance because it's more efficient than waiting for a grievance officer or coordinator to visit the housing area or the locked grievance box. If a person in custody is not satisfied with the outcome of an investigation or resolution to a paper-based grievance, they may check off a box on the grievance disposition form, requesting to appeal the determination. In contrast, grievances filed electronically through 311 may not be appealed. Instead, they are solely investigated by the captain or a uniformed staff member at the facility, with their resolution determined at that level. However, there are no quiet confidential spaces for individuals to discuss electronic grievances with department uniformed staff. Instead, discussions often occur in noisy day rooms. This results in people in custody refusing to provide statements or reduce their electronic grievances to paper form, which precludes their grievance from the grievance appeal process. The department's appeals process begins with a preliminary evidentiary review. If the grievance is not resolved at that level, it must be escalated to a commanding officer. If a person in custody does not accept the commanding officer's disposition, they may appeal the decision to the Central Office Review Committee, or CORC. Once a grievance or request reaches CORC, the board has five business days to provide a recommendation. The board reviews grievances that are filed with the department, whether they're submitted in writing or electronically through 311. Specifically, BOC staff review data that has been inserted in the department's service desk system, a record-keeping system used by the department to track grievances. BOC staff identify areas for discussion with facility leadership regarding recurring issues, and facilitate follow-up processes with grievance coordinators at the relevant facilities. Moreover, the board hears concerns directly from individuals in custody, either during BOC staff's facility tours or through our toll-free hotline. We also receive emails raising concerns on behalf of people in custody. BOC monitors, review the service desk system to determine if the department has already addressed the issue. In most cases, OCGS has not resolved the issue, or the individual's concern has been forwarded to the facility and is awaiting a response. If an issue does not fall into one of the 26 grievable categories, OCGS staff considers it non-grievable, and it becomes a request. Such requests are directed to a separate DOC office, where they are not subject to the grievance process outlined in the department's grievance directive. The board has found that many non-grievable requests are associated with fear for safety, concerns about DOC staff, interpersonal violence, and sexual abuse. The board maintains records of all complaints submitted directly to BOC regarding alleged violations of the board's minimum standards. Once a complaint is received, the board's staff investigate, speak with the impacted person in custody, and follow up with the relevant facility staff to ensure compliance with the board's minimum standards, and make recommendations for practice and policy changes where appropriate. Between January 1, 2023, and March 31, 2024, the department received over 55,000 grievances, 40,000 of which were considered grievable. Only 261 were formally resolved through the appeal process. In the first quarter of 2024, only two grievances were resolved via appeal, which is a significant drop from 54 in the previous quarter. Between January 1, 2024, and March 31, 2024, the enhanced supervision housing unit at the Rose M. Singer Center, or RESH, had the highest rate of grievances filed per 100 people in custody. The grievance rate at RESH was 52.7% higher than the system-wide rate, and the top grievance categories include concerns regarding medical care, housing placement, staff conduct, allegations of sexual abuse, and food. Based on BOC staff's observations, the board recommends that grievances submitted by people in custody through 311 be handled similarly to a written statement. When an electronic grievance is received, the department should offer private and confidential areas for the complainant to voice their concerns and provide further details about the cause of their grievance. Similarly, DOC should simplify and streamline the electronic grievance process, providing clear explanations and educational materials in each housing area on the differences between paper and electronic grievances. DOC should also implement mechanisms for the timely acknowledgement of electronic grievances, separate from resolution timeframes. Moreover, DOC should establish independent review teams within each facility to examine grievances, identify delays, and monitor trends. This will ensure the identification of recurring systemic issues, and will highlight deficiencies, improve conditions, and increase awareness of issues among DOC leadership. The department should also conduct regular evaluations of the grievance system and implement necessary reforms based on feedback and best practices. Furthermore, it's imperative for the department to guarantee unrestricted and consistent access to grievance boxes by installing them in each housing area, checking them daily, and rapidly providing receipts, facilitating ease of access, and timely submission of grievances. DOC must also ensure the confidentiality of grievances and protect grievance filers against retaliation or intimidation. The board is dedicated to continuously monitoring the complaint and grievance systems in NYC jails. These systems should be procedurally fair, safe, accessible, transparent, responsive, coordinated, and consistent across all facilities. The board plans to release a report in December that evaluates DOC's grievance system. The report will incorporate direct feedback from incarcerated individuals and propose recommendations for improvements, including improving the grievance process for vulnerable populations, including people in custody who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, and gender non-conforming. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your testimony. So we just heard from DOC, and I'm sure there's a lot to comment on, but wanted to start with the comment by Dr. Stafford's statement that most grievances are being handled by non-uniformed OCGS staff and not-uniformed officers. I'm wondering if you have any additional commentary around that?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to turn it over to Director Melendez to respond.
Hi, Barbie Melendez, Director of Public Accountability and Oversight. So I did take several notes on the comments that DOC made, and one of those that stuck out was that the response regarding who investigates the grievance once it is submitted to the Department of Correction. And I think that the way that it is worded, it can be a little confusing, right? So, OCGS consists of uniform and non-uniform staff. 311s being the most common way that people file their grievances, which we call electronic grievances. They are mostly investigated by captains in the facility. When they talk about tasking out grievances to the units or the facility, that means that once a grievance is accepted into the 311 system, it is tasked out, and it is given a task ID, right? And once it's given the task ID, an email is sent to the facility, and the facility is responsible for responding to the grievance. Facility leadership assigns a captain to investigate the grievance. And what does that look like? Kind of like what Jasmine mentioned in her testimony. It is not a confidential, quiet space, where it makes it an environment where people are open to make statements, or people are open to elaborate more on their grievances. So a captain usually goes into the housing area with a statement form, asking a person in custody to make a statement on the grievance that they already submitted. Kind of to your point, Chair Nurse, when you asked, are 311s going through the same process as a paper-based grievance, right? So, it is many times intimidating for people in custody to continue with the grievance process, because now they are in a housing area with a paper in front of them, where the department, a uniformed staff person comes to them and say, write a statement because of the grievance that you submitted, right? We know that jail culture doesn't allow for statements to be made freely, and people to be comfortable to make those statements. This is why many grievances stop at the captain level in the facilities, which can be, but I don't know for 100% why those numbers, as to why we don't have more appealable grievances going through the process, have stopped at that level. Now, I will clarify, the grievance coordinator is not the person that always goes to the housing area, because I know you asked that question. The grievance officer, another uniformed staff person, goes. Years ago... Years ago, when grievance was predominantly paper grievances before the merger of the three-one-one system with the paper grievances, if someone filed a grievance, it was, there was a more humanistic approach to the to the transaction, right? Now it's more about, we have a backlog of grievances, we need to resolve this. Before, a person in custody would come down to a grievance coordinator's office, speak to the grievance coordinator, which is a civilian in regular clothing, in their office, and talk about what they put on their, in their grievance statement form, right? That no longer exists within the Department of Correction. The merger of the three-one-one system with the I G R P paper-based grievance system has morphed into a, because as you can see, there has been so many grievances that are that are three-one-one based that it has morphed into a system where it's very transactional. So, this is why you see the increase now.
And the reason why I had asked that, because I was reading the directive, and in the language, it seems to be specific to the grievance coordinator being the one who interacts. But then when I saw the staff numbers of coordinators to grievance officers, it felt like that's impossible, given the breadth of of grievances. So I, and and the anecdotes we are hearing that it's actually correction officer or facility leadership going to to do this, so.
You said correction officer, and that's where that's where it, people, you know, language matters, right? It's a captain that investigates the grievances within the facility. Right, so I think if you said uniform.
It's not, it's not O C G S staff.
Well, yes, exactly.
Right, okay. I'm I'm looking for clarification anytime.
You gotta be clear.
Please feel free to interrupt me because I I'm, it's, obviously, this is a convoluted process. And and so, yes, it seems like the language has allowed D O C to be fuzzy on on giving us a concrete answer. When you, and I didn't even think to ask about when someone comes. I just imagine they come to their cell or their housing unit specifically to have the conversation. And in your testimony, you were saying a private confidential space for people to have this conversation. And I'm trying to imagine where that would actually be in a housing unit. Do you all have any suggestions?
A private confidential space has always been an issue because then that goes back to mental health, being able to provide their services in a private confidential space. Grievance being able to interview, social service being able to conduct their interviews with their with the people in custody. A private confidential space is not available in all housing areas. Most of the time, the most private confidential space that can be provided is in a vestibule, and I'm not sure if you toured the jails, but it's usually the area between two housing areas that there's an officer in the A-post usually that can hear the conversation or anyone passing by as well. That's like the most confidential space that is commonly used.
So, and I didn't, we didn't get a chance to to develop a line of questioning of it, although it did come up in our conversation. Are there any instances where a grievance coming in skips O G C S staff in some way? Maybe it gets put through the the system but is tasked out to facility leadership in a way that totally bypasses the O C G S staff? Besides what you're saying with the captain, but is that, is that a the tasking out part, is it being interrupted in any way?
What do you mean by interrupted?
So I think we had, in some of the anecdotes that come on our way, it seemed that as a complaint comes in, it goes into the system, but it's being taken up by facility leadership rather than the.
The coordinator.
Yeah, the coordinator or the uniformed staff in in that.
Most paper-based grievances are handled by the grievance coordinator. Most electronic, or what we call three-one-one, or it could be emails from the public defender's office, it could be that we sent it to them. Electronic grievances are tasked to the facility. I know it's confusing because the grievance coordinator is also embedded in the facility, so. So forgive me, but I will clarify as many times as I need to for you to understand it so that you have it clear, because it's important. Grievance coordinators have an office in every jail. For the most part, you have at least one and sometimes two grievance coordinators per facility plus a grievance officer, except in some jails that don't have a grievance officer, like R N D C, where the young adults are currently housed. Big deal, they don't have one. So now, you have the emails that come from Dr. Stafford, from O C G S, to the facility, right, which used to be called wardens, now they're A Cs. So it gets, it goes to the A C's office, and that A C is responsible for tasking that out for investigation to a captain. That captain is not an O C G S staff person. They're uniform. They investigate the grievances and they resolve, unsubstantiate, substantiate, it depends. If the, if they go to the housing area and that person refuses to write a statement, many times they unsubstantiate it and it's done right there. That's where it ends.
Right, so I guess what I'm thinking is, is that process, when that's happening, is that violating laws that are in place or policies that is in place?
It's sort of still within the directive, except that it doesn't have that component of being able to appeal like a paper grievance. I know that they said that they're actively revising the policy, but I think that because things have have changed so much since the last directive that was updated in twenty eighteen, language has to be clear on what is what. When you have this investigation into the electronic grievances, what is the process to appeal? And what happens if that person doesn't want to submit another statement? They already made the statement when they called the three-one-one operator. And many times, if they talk about more than one issue in the electronic grievance, unlike a paper grievance where it's specific and on the form, it explains to them how they need to go about the grievance process, there are no instructions, there is no educational material. So so people don't know what they can call three-one-one for or not call them for. So they call about everything, everything that's going on in their housing area. One of the topics that you brought up in the beginning of 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 your statement was food, clothing, and medical care, right? Those things can be grievable, food and clothing, but medical care is not, right? So if you have medical care being called into three-one-one, it's possible that people in custody may not know that's not even a grievable topic, right? So it gets taxed out to C H S, and then we don't see anything else that happens after that, kind of like what you told them when they were here. Food and clothing, we can see in their system what they're doing with it. Food is a little harder issue, that's a big topic and a big issue right now on Rikers Island. But most of the time, when they bring up these topics to the facility, right? And they say, here you go, for example, A, you know, A C nurse, if that was you working in the facility, here are your top three grievances, it's just stats. There's no clear explanation as to, look, this is the issue with your clothing in your jail, you know? We know that this is what people are telling us, and this is how you can fix it, or how can we work together? They're treating grievances like individual incidents instead of part of a bigger picture to prevent the grievances from continuing to be called in.
Thank you, and thanks for really opening up that explanation. One of the things they testified today was that they do have grievance boxes at every single housing facility. To your knowledge, is that true?
To my knowledge, they said that they have fifty grievance boxes across the facilities. I would like to know where those boxes are because many jails just have one box. I know that when West Facility opens, because West Facility is open right now, right? But when A M K C closed, they opened up the West dorms, which now connect to West Facility, so they're calling it, it has a new name, it's no longer West Dorms, it's it's West Facility Annex. We requested for grievance boxes to be installed at least in the vestibules so two housing areas can have access. I don't know if that's in their numbers, because then that would, that would be two per dorm, which you might see a little spike there. But I would ask for a list of where these grievance boxes, what facility, and where are they located?
And they said, I think the the terminology they used was targeted common areas as a place where access is, so in common areas where people are out in the open and maybe don't feel comfortable walking over to the box and pulling the paper or filling it out. Can you talk a little bit more about the issues with that access?
Right, so throughout the years, the the jails on Rikers Island have become more and more restricted movement. You need an escort to go everywhere. Many years ago, when I first started, A M K C used to, you can get a pass, or O B C C, you could get a pass. That no longer exists. You need to have an escort and a destination everywhere that you go in the jail. Those target areas are usually corridors near where programs used to at one point happen. We know that now most services come to the housing area, and it is very rare for someone to even be in those targeted areas in the corridors unless they are going to the intake, or they're getting escorted to the clinic, or they just happen to pass by that box, or they're going to court. But an everyday person that's that's not sick, that doesn't have to go to court to go to the intake, that just wants to put their grievance in the grievance box, they're not getting access. There are many times that our staff, while we're touring the facilities, people in custody come to us and say, I don't trust D O C, can you go take my slip to the grievance box? We don't take it, you know, but it's a problem, you know? We'll let the officer know, hey, this person needs to get to the box. But there is a, there is a big issue with being able to confidentially police your form in the grievance boxes throughout the jails.
Thank you. Chief Rembert testified about how phone lines are cut during emergency lock-ins. And can you talk about the harm caused by this practice and whether you believe there is an adequate security rationale for cutting the phones during lockdowns?
So phones are cut during lockdowns to prevent people from wanting to manipulate their cell doors to go use the phones, right? Many times, it's to also get them to lock in because they're not going to be on the phone. Now, your question about lockdowns and how long lockdowns last, again, language matters. So, people lock in during the shift rotation. When an officer comes back, let's just say, let's start with the morning, right? So phones have to be on during the times that people are waiting in the housing area to go to court. That's like between four and seven A M, right? And then afterwards, they lock in for count and change of tour. And then that's one hour. And then between eight and three, they're locked out again. Between three and four, they're locked back in. Between four and nine, they're locked back out, right? In your eyes, Chair Nurse, if someone is locked in between, so from the night before to the next day in the afternoon, that's almost a whole day lockdown, right? The department may not see it that way since the lockdown timeframe is interrupted by those times where they would already be locked in. So I would say that, to to take that into account when you're asking that question. But the phones, the phones are off, and then when they lift the lockdown, the phones come back on. People have tablets. We as, we don't really rely on tablets as a form of using the phone because there are lots of issues with these tablets. So the phone is the primary way to be able to submit their electronic grievances. They have to, they have to turn off the phones during lockdowns. It's just a matter of how long these lockdowns are lasting.
Thank you. I wanted to turn to the response that Mr. Levine gave about the five-forty reports. You know, we had asked, these, these are overdue, they're not publicly available. We heard that they posted a report this morning. I'm curious if you all have any preliminary takeaways from any recently repub, uh, recently published report? And is it true that the report released this morning found that certain allegations of sexual assault that were received via three-one-one call last year did not receive an investigation?
I'm going to pass it over to Director Bailey for that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Nurse, Barb Bailey, Director of Bounce Prevention. Yes, the the five-forty that the department published this morning, their biannual P R report, it was due in 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 February, they published it this morning. Significant drop in P R reportable cases, sixty-three over the last six months of two thousand twenty-three, down from one fourteen during the first half of two thousand twenty-three. They reported that based on that drop, they conducted an audit and determined that fourteen, fourteen complaints were kind of missed, three-one-one complaints. Allegations of sexual abuse were missed, and they've committed to retraining their entire P R staff and and increasing layers of review of these investigations, which is encouraging. We're also conducting our own independent analysis of the way that these three-one-one calls arrive at S I U, Special Investigations Unit, and and how they're reviewing them. A C Levine had reported that all P R allegations receive full investigations. They control what is or is not considered a a a P R allegation, but not all of these three-one-one calls are receiving full investigations. In fact, most aren't. What they're receiving is a preliminary review. And then at that juncture, they determine whether or not it's P R reportable. If they consider it's not, they 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 close it out with a documentation known as a facility referral. So we're currently closely reviewing a batch of these referrals, worksheets to to determine the investigative steps that they're taking prior to closing them out.
Sorry, just to kind of regurgitate what you said. The the fourteen reports that, or three-one-one calls that somehow weren't properly categorized or were missed, that was out of how many and during what time period? That was the six-month time period?
Yeah. This was a six-month window, second half of two thousand twenty-three.
Got it.
I'll just quote the report, which was published on the website this morning. Upon noting substantial decrease in P R reportable allegations designated during the current reporting period, P R S I U conducted an audit of all sexual assault and harassment complaints received via three-one-one from July two thousand twenty-three to December two thousand twenty-three. Calls to three-one-one represent the most utilized method for making a complaint of sexual misconduct. Through the review, it was found that fourteen complaints were not reported to the Central Operations Desk, which is the means by which P R S I U is notified. And because they were not reported, they did not receive a preliminary review.
Okay, thank you for restating that. Is there, you know, just wanted to open it up if there's any additional things you would like the the council to know based on some of the topics we've touched on between the grievance boxes, the sexual assault grievances, the reporting? Any any additional comments you want to provide?
I would just, I would just say that it's, I'm I'm encouraged to know that the department has opened up their review of the grievance directive, and I I hope that the board can have a seat at the table of of that review so that we can ensure that the recommendations that we've stated already on the record are are implemented within it.
Yeah, it's it's unclear what that review looks like or if that's just a statement that is useful to continue to say in response to questions. It sounds like at the end of the day, we might know when there's a potential timeline for a number of things. I think. I think, I think those are our questions for you. Do you have, I mean, are there any specific kinds of grievances that come directly to the board that are, are a trend?
So, so grievances go to the Department of Correction and then we receive complaints. Many times our staff will look into, once, so once we receive a complaint, it gets assigned to the monitor that's in the facility where the person in custody is housed, where the complaint came from. And many times our staff will look into the grievance system to see if, one, if it has already been received by the department. Also, is this something that is like a reoccurring issue? One of the top categories aside from, that we have seen recently, aside from the, let me look up the stats here. The top, the top five, medical housing staff sexual assault. And then the fifth one would be food, which you also brought up. Food is a big issue right now on Rikers Island, separate from the commissary that you brought up. Commissary is something completely different. Not everyone has access to commissary. You need money to buy commissary. We don't, that's not something that our staff necessarily investigate because we stress institutional food because that is the right for everyone. Yeah, there are issues with, with KEIF and their contract. That's for sure because we get complaints like that. When we get complaints like that, we send it to the Department of Correction because there are certain complaints that we receive that are, that we have no control over, you know? Commissary being one of them, property being one of them, the transferring of property. The only way for our staff to really investigate is like to go to each jail and try to find their stuff. That's something that's, that's usually the issue of the facility. So we'll send it to them. But we independently investigate every single complaint that comes to that, to us unless it falls under like these special circumstances where we really can't do anything about it. For example, if someone says that they have an infection because they haven't gone to dental, we have to send that to CHS because our staff can't escort someone to the clinic. So, but our monitors, we have at least one monitor, sometimes two, assigned to every jail that investigate things independently of the department while they at the same time review the grievance system to see if our trends are matching. And most of the time, when we have something come to us, the department has ten times that as well.
And, and just for the record, which I think we touched on, but maybe just for my sake, the, you know, BOC has real time access to DOC grievances filed and you're able to follow along as it's moving. But for correctional health, you all are not able to see any of that. And that's kind of alarming given just that it's the top complaint is related to medical in every single instance. And so how are you, how does BOC work with CHS in terms of its grievance system and, and trying to resolve logistical issues in there or, or overall trends?
So they, they, they mentioned the healthcare triage line. That is something that has also morphed into a very problematic thing. And the reason why I say that is because years ago, our monitors can go to the facility and check who signed up for sick call for the day prior, right? Because it used to be that each jail, each housing area had a sick call signup sheet where the persons in custody would sign up for sick call and they would, and the officer would collect it at the end of the day. And the midnight officer would take it to the control room and the control room would hold it. And the clinic officer would come the next day, pick up those sheets and they knew who to escort. The system is less transparent now because we do not know who is signing up for sick call. All we know is that DOC and CHS have a healthcare triage line that, that once someone calls them, they create a call down list, like they said during their testimony. And that call down list is who they're going to bring down. Not everybody gets brought, brought down, but we don't know how many people actually request a sick call and how many are on the call down list and do those names match? And then after those names match, are they actually getting to the clinic? Because many times people in custody report that once they call the healthcare triage line, if they don't get taken the next day, they have to call again. Or sometimes they're, they're not prioritized in the way that they believe that they should be, which also results in an increase in health and medical 311s because they called 311 multiple times because they don't hear back from someone in a timely fashion, the way that, that they think it should be prioritized, like, like infections or, you know, bleeding or not follow up because they have a broken finger or something like that.
Right, and I, I believe I asked them a line of question about their prioritization in, in that, in that process? Like how are they prioritizing calls on their end as it's coming in? And I don't think we got an actual answer, but hopefully we'll get some follow-up.
It's a matter of names matching. It's a matter of being able to be transparent as to who is requesting sick call and are those the same people that are getting down there? And the people that don't request that line but wake up sick the next day, can they go to the clinic?
Yeah. Okay, I, I don't have any other questions, but if there's anything else you'd like to let the council know, the floor can be yours. Otherwise, we appreciate the work you all are doing. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Okay. All right, so as BOC transitions, we're going to open up the hearing for public testimonies. I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms in the back and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you'll have two to three minutes to speak, I think three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, specifically on the hearing topic, complaint and grievance procedures for people in custody. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within seventy-two hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. For our first panel, we have Michael Klinger, Natalie Fiorenzo, Rachel Schoterman, and Lauren Nakamura. Michael Klinger, Natalie Fiorenzo, Rachel Schneiderman, and Lauren Nakamura, sorry, days again. Brain can only do so much. And when you're ready to begin, you can go. Whoever wants to start, yeah, we could start with you. Just press the silver button.
Okay.
All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Schneiderman and I'm a correction specialist at New York County Defender Services. And we've talked about this a lot this morning, but today I want to highlight how disorganized and convoluted the DOC grievance process can be, especially for those filing complaints that DOC considers not grievable. For non-grievable complaints, to my knowledge, there's no clear procedure for how incarcerated people should report the many issues they face. And this is especially problematic because according to DOC's own reporting, they received 2,357 non-grievable complaints in the first quarter of 2024 alone. This includes 639 complaints against staff, 304 housing complaints, 225 sexual abuse complaints, and the list goes on. So in lieu of any meaningful grievance procedure at NYCDS, we've come up with our own procedures for ensuring that our clients' non-grievable issues are resolved. There's the DOC Legal Division, which we reach out to for housing complaints and facility transfers. There's the Office of Security and Intelligence Unit, or OSIU, which we reach out to for protective custody transfer specifically. Instances of sexual abuse or misconduct, we report to the Priya Department, whereas all other acts of violence should be reported to the Legal Division, the Correctional Intelligence Bureau, CHS, or OSIU. If we report that DOC staff have violated DOC policy, that must be sent to the Investigation Division or ID. But if those policy violations rise to a criminal level, they're instead investigated by the City's Department of Investigation. And to my knowledge, there's no official process for grieving medical malpractice or insufficient treatment at the hands of correctional health services, but we send those complaints to CHS Patient Relations. And if you make a complaint about violence or wanting a housing transfer or being the victim of sexual abuse, the Department of Correction seems to think it is too much to ask to be notified of the progress of the investigation of that complaint, let alone its outcome. And if you had a hard time following my explanations of these divisions and their various roles and who to reach out to when, imagine trying to navigate the system while incarcerated, after being subjected to violence and neglect and any of the other hundreds of obstacles one could face while detained on Rikers Island. I want to use the remainder of my time to share a story because we talked a lot about Priya today. And in January of this year, I heard from a client that he had been sexually abused while on Rikers Island. He was jumped by a group of people. He reported that he was feeling suicidal. So DOC staff brought him into an intake cell, sprayed him, tackled him to the ground and while on the ground, unconsentually touched his genitals. I reported this to Priya OSIU, the Board of Correction, the facility's leadership, CHS. And without ever actually speaking to my client, I got an email from Priya that simply said, sex abuse did not occur. I share this story because I hope it can underscore how difficult it is to have human rights, have your human right violations addressed while in DOC custody. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Natalie Fiorenzo. I work alongside Rachel Schneiderman as a correction specialist at New York County Defenders. This hearing, a lot, a lot has come out today. And it's been, there is data, but it's been very kind of like hypothetical, more on the outside of the scope. So I wanted to bring some real life examples of what grievances and grievance responses look like. These were submitted to me by a family member of a detainee that I've been working with at Rikers Island, who was thoughtful enough to collect the grievances, give them to a family member who then was able to send them to me. So I have four here that I'm going to briefly paraphrase the grievance and then the response by DOC. This grievance describes a brutal beating by another person in custody where the officer did nothing about it, watched and waited basically, then threw the detainee who was beaten, who submitted this grievance, into his cell and said, clean yourself up before the captain comes around to do his rounds. And the response that DOC gave was that the grievance was not submitted within the 10-day timeframe and no further action would be taken. This is the second one. And the description of the events taking place in this grievance is a complaint that an officer basically told our client that they were going to put them on a tour, which is when they kind of just house them in different housing areas where they know they may be unsafe, and said that this detainee would be dead in three days on this tour. And the response by DOC was that due to the fact that this was a complaint against a staff member, it would be forwarded to an outside agency and they would not address it further. The third complaint I have here is that a client was very badly, or that the same detainee, sorry, was very badly assaulted and then left for eight and a half hours in his cell without medical attention. Once someone came by who decided to get him medical attention, he was rushed directly to the hospital where it was found that he had two fractures in his face and that his vision in his left eye would never be the same again. The doctor said that he could have died very easily. And the complaint was listed as complaint needs to be filed within 10 days. This was filed in 11 days. And then this is the last one that I have here. This client had returned from the hospital and the doctor's orders was that he needed to be like on bedrest because of the injuries to his face. He needed to be lying down in his cell. He was instead left in an intake area, which is not like a cell. There's not really an area to lie down unless you want to lie on the floor for 24 hours upon his return from the hospital. And the response by DOC was that although this was submitted in the 10-day timeframe, it did not reach OCGS because the client was in the hospital for a month so that no further action would be taken. These are just examples of a grievance from one individual on Rikers Island. There were over 9,000 grievances filed in the last quarter. These responses by DOC do not even come close to meeting the threshold of urgency that are listed in these grievances. Where are they going after OCGS denies them? To this day, I know that this specific detainee has, these are unresolved, these are unresolved grievances. I want to clarify just that the, in, in hopefully this process, the grievances, the grievance system is overturned and fixed and made a lot better. But what we're not asking for here is just for everything to become grievable because there are such severe exhaustion procedures when something is grievable. It's rather for everything, the whole system, to be fixed in its entirety because as it stands now, people are going through this with no answer. So thank you very much for holding this hearing and we really hope meaningful action gets taken for our clients going further.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Nakamura. I'm a staff attorney with the Prisoners Rights Project at the Legal Aid Society. Thank you for having this hearing about the persistent issues with the grievance process in the city jails. You've heard from the department how it should work, but the Prisoners Rights Project would like to share how it actually does work. Every day, the Prisoners Rights Project receives calls from people in city jails and we often urge them to file grievances. In response, we're consistently told that grieving is pointless because DOC will not do anything about the problem. The process is long, confusing and hard to complete and filing a grievance makes someone vulnerable to retaliation. The current grievance process requires the completion and submission of specific, of a specific grievance form and then filing successive appeals to multiple entities. Only by completing all steps can a complaint be considered exhausted, a threshold requirement for filing suit in federal court. DOC makes exhaustion difficult in multiple ways. The grievance process is time consuming and there's no way to expedite urgent issues. The list of what is grievable is confusing. Medical care is not grievable. Access to medical care probably is. To the extent that this process is moving towards electronic grievances, that option is not always available when facilities are under lockdown. And there's no way to appeal or exhaust issues through the electronic process. People often get no response to their grievances, putting the burden on them to make a series of time calculations to determine when to file an appeal for each step where they received no response. Besides acting as a barrier to litigation, the utility of the grievance process is questionable. There is no accountability for failures to respond to people's concerns. It devalues important complaints from safety issues and access to medical care to basic human needs like food and hygiene when every issue requires multiple levels of review. When grievances about crucial issues are lost in the bureaucratic process, it can lead to overall conditions deteriorating, affecting hundreds of people. These consequences are compounded when someone is blocked from seeking relief in court, effectively shielding DOC from accountability. The DOC grievance process must be reformed by simplifying the process and shortening the timeframes for DOC responses. Each grievance should be given a tracking number and a written substantive responses should be mandated for each level of the process. There must be confidentiality to protect those who file complaints from retaliation and strict penalties for staff who retaliate against them. We thank the council and its staff for its diligent investigation into this issue.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Klinger. I'm a jail services attorney with Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you to Chair Nurse, and to the committee and committee staff for the opportunity to testify today. Our written testimony describes the ways in which the people we represent experience the complaint and grievance system. It explains the lack of substantive response to complaints and grievances, the failure of the department to provide resolutions that are required by its own directives, and its failure to provide an opportunity for the grievant to accept or else to seek to appeal that resolution. In the absence of meaningfully addressing complaints, we believe the department misses a critical opportunity to improve the conditions for people in custody and reduce tensions in its facilities. Instead, the grievance process becomes one more site of conflict, with grievance officers frequently contributing to escalating tensions. They do this by failing to adequately explain the process, failing to tour regularly, failing to respond to inquiries about grievances, failing to provide the required receipt for all filed grievances, but they also do this by failing to speak respectfully to people in custody, and by mocking the seriousness of grievances that may not seem important to them. Some of the suggestions the council will hear today will contribute to better outcomes, things like better harmonizing third-party complaints with grievance forms submitted by people in custody, or removing at least one level of appellate review for individuals seeking to exhaust the grievance process, although apparently they've done that. But we urge the council to hold the administration to a more fundamental reconsideration. Through their complaints, the people we represent express a desire to be heard, seen, and respected. The department must develop in OCGS a core of specialists who will take pride in their patience and empathy, as well as their ability to communicate across boundaries, negotiate in stressful situations, and fundamentally to listen. Such an approach has the potential to serve as a pressure-release valve, and this in turn will help to create a culture that prioritizes improving conditions for people in custody, abiding by the board's minimum standards and other legal requirements, and just as importantly, respects the ability of people in custody to make themselves heard. Happy to answer any questions based on our testimony. Thanks.
Thank you. I do have just a few questions for the table, and feel free to answer, and however it comes to you. But, you know, I think today we've very clearly covered why there's just like not actually a grievance process. It's just an exhaustive form situation. I think one of the things that I'm kind of connecting back to now is, when I first came into this position, one of the first things we did was go to Rikers to look for specific people, because legal service providers were, you know, calling us, saying there's these alarming issues with a handful of people, and they're getting nowhere, and they actually need someone to just go put eyes on the facility, right? And that's a, you know, of course, that's like a strong action to take, is to say, like, can you use your power to go and show up to go find these individuals? And that seems kind of like a last resort situation. But what are the other strategies that are in between, you know, having your clients fill out this grievance process or go through this process, and like raising, ringing the alarm and asking elected officials to go actually put eyes on people? What are other strategies that you're using when individuals are kind of lost in this process? If you want to share anything?
I think the way that I can answer for Brooklyn Defender Services is to say that we have a jail services unit that supplements the efforts of assigned caseworkers, including attorneys and social workers in an individual case. So, in part, so that we're able to focus on, specifically on the issues in the jails, the staff of jail services, which isn't large, and I'm part of it, makes trips regularly to the jails, and we identify, based on what we're hearing from our own attorneys and social workers, the folks that have situations or conditions of confinement that require some attention. Based on our conversations with our own clients, we will follow up on grievances that they've already filed. We will ask the department for updates on those grievances. Those never get responses. We will file our own third-party complaints or grievances through email, which, as you heard today, is a way that we can contact them, but it is a fairly one-way process. The information that they receive from us in those instances will be populated eventually on that public-facing website. It'll be assigned a number, and you can type in the number, and we can get a fairly generic response that doesn't tell us, as you heard, whether or not there is reason to advise appealing. I mean, there is really no opportunity to appeal in that situation. It's not submitted on a written form. It's not a 3-1 complaint by someone in custody, which in itself also wouldn't be appealable unless the individual met in a very public space and agreed to fill out a form, and then check that they wanted to appeal it all in good time. So I'm not sure that's responsive, except to say that we try to follow up on the grievances that our clients let us know they filed, or we try to file as close to a grievance as we can by contacting the department through email.
Thank you.
I would just also add that the only way in our, and I'll speak for NYCDS, in our experience to actually get a response from DOC is to sound the alarm. It's only when we put out loud requests for them to address things, if we testify in DOC meetings, or if we testify, for example, in a city council hearing, that we eventually get a response. And until we've sent email after email after email, and each email having to seem more frantic and urgent than the next, because these issues are extremely urgent, that we get a response from DOC, and that things are sometimes addressed.
And just adding on to what Rachel said, like, in summary, the question you're asking is what is happening before the point where we ask you to go put eyes on it? It's us trying to do that and seeing if the, because we're coming from like the attorney perspective, so the DOC is gonna care the very least about the people in its custody, about what they have to say. What they may care about is what their attorneys have to say, because they feel like, oh, like, someone else knows about this. Maybe we have to make a change. If our eyes on it are not enough, this is a real, I mean, it can, obviously, it's a problem no matter what, but that's a really big problem, is if us sounding the alarm does not get some movement. And that does happen. And those are some of the more severe kind of corrupt situations, where not even us, our action is enough to cause some sort of action. Usually, this is when it involves like a correction officer. This is when it involves like a staff assault, or something like that.
And just briefly, how, you know, when you think about your caseload as a pie, like, what percentage of that, how often are you having to go above and beyond with your casework to get things resolved for your clients? Is it a substantial chunk of your time?
I would say almost all of it.
Okay. That's what we assumed. Okay. Thank you all for being here and staying through the whole thing and testifying. We appreciate it. Our next panel will be Victor Herrera, Darren Mack, Jan Hassan Butteya.
And just to call again, in case they're here in the building, Jan Hassan Butteya. Otherwise, we can start when you are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Nurse. My name is Darren Mack, co-director at Freedom Agenda. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today and for holding this hearing to highlight the means incarcerated people should have to make their voices heard and get some form of redress when their rights are violated in the custody of the City of New York. Incarcerated people are dependent on the guards for so many things that those of us on the outside take for granted, including access to meals, medical care, clean laundry, outside time, visits, mail, and even toilet paper. Which means guards also have the power to provide or deny those things. Sometimes it's just neglect, and other times it's intentional abuse of power. But so many of these basic human needs are being denied to people in DOC custody on a regular basis. What makes that worse, and what allows it to continue, is that there's no functioning system for people in custody to voice their complaints and have them addressed. Guards know that, and people in custody know that. It breeds frustration, and people end up using the only tool they have available to them, which guards then characterize as evidence of a violent population, and try to use that to justify oppressive measures like shackling and solitary confinement that will only breed more frustration. When I was incarcerated at Rikers as a teenager for 19 months, the idea of a real system of addressing grievances was nonexistent. There was a wooden box attached to the wall in the hallway with "snitch box" written on it to submit paper complaints that few people dared to go near. And I'm sure there was, in theory, some kind of system for filing and hearing complaints. Whatever DOC's official policy was, the reality that I understood, and that people inside are still facing now, is that DOC can do almost anything they want, and there's not much you can do. Research on this concept of procedural justice in jails shows the single most important factor in a person's decision to follow or not follow rules when they are detained is whether they felt they'd been treated fairly. That was a more important factor than a person's previous history of misconduct. When DOC is asked about violence and reduction at Rikers, they have increasingly tried to hide behind an excuse that a greater portion of people in their custody are now facing serious charges. First of all, limiting incarcerations of people facing the most serious charges should not be a surprise or cause for complaint from jail staff. Detaining less people facing lower-level charges is a good thing, a trend that should continue, not be reversed. Second, DOC has no evidence people facing serious charges are any more likely to engage in violence while in custody. Instead of making assumptions about the people in their custody based on charges they haven't even been convicted of, DOC should focus on a common sense way of creating a calm and jail environment. Make sure people's basic needs are met, and when they aren't, give them a real way to complain, be heard, and get the issue addressed. And that shouldn't be hard. And I'll just conclude by saying, from everything we've heard today, you know, from DOC, CHS, the Board of Corrections, and the public, it adds more evidence to that Rikers cannot be fixed or reformed. You know, we may be able to hopefully mitigate some of the harms that's occurring, but the only solution is for Rikers to close. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. And I would just add that, you know, even in a new jail system, it seems the procedural challenges around grievances, it still just needs a thorough overhaul as well. Ready, Victor?
Thank you. I might as well just read it off my statement. Good afternoon, Chair Nurse, City Council Committee. My name is Victor Herrera, a member, leader of Freedom Agenda, Treatment Not Jails, Incentive Community Alternatives. I submit my testimony on the committee on criminal justice as my own personal experience and knowledge of the grievance process, both while detained at Rikers Island under the control of the New York City Department of Corrections and New York State Department of Corrections. While in custody, I chose to pursue academics and employ my abilities to clerk and type by joining the grievance committee as a grievance representative. The grievance committee, as established and implemented, is a First Amendment-protected activity that I experienced firsthand with a process that was totally ineffective. It's existing simply to meet minimum standards. In my efforts to take on the role of representative for detainees, I was deeply concerned with the committee's process, the roles taken up by the Department of Corrections staff, the debilitating effect the wardens and commissioners' conduct in reviewing and providing the needed due process and the rule of law of the strict New York Department of Corrections practice of obstructing the grievance procedure intended to undermine its purpose. As an experienced litigator, having filed numerous federal actions against the City, against the New York City Department of Corrections, I learned that the practice served more the liability factors that were clearly part of the City of New York Corporation Council, supposedly intended to keep from having any findings that favor detainees that could someday be used as an admittance of liability, a course of which the city ideology will prohibit and prevent. My advocating for the process to work as intended resulted in the New York City Department of Corrections taking steps under the grievance procedure to remove me as a representative by initiating force disciplinary reports, which followed with a finding of guilt solitary confinement that ultimately met the requirements of removal that was utilized in such a manner as to be official misconduct. I invite the committee to request the history of assignments, the length of time representatives remain in position, compare them with the statistics related to removal, the disciplinary invocation utilized by New York City DOC and the ensuing mistreated detainee on account of the force held by NYC Department of Corrections over the procedures. The grievance process gives the impression of an unbiased complaint form, but instead, it was dominated by DOC staff and their interest with only one grievance representative present versus three DOC staff. The process also lacked necessary protection against retaliation of grievance representatives or people in custody. To create a more fair and balanced process, I recommend that the grievance committee and the people present at the grievance hearings be expanded to include a Board of Correction representative or another external entity tasked with safeguarding the rights of people in custody and the delivery of minimum standards. To add more, I faced brutal attacks, okay? I even almost lost my life in an adequate correction facility because of working and advocating for the grievance process, okay? I did four years of solitary confinement. This is the norm inside the institutions, okay? Grievance, the grievance process is there just to meet the minimum standards, okay? It's not really there for the detainees. And as I heard, the boxes are marked, "snitch boxes," okay, to make detainees reluctant to file a grievance. You know, they're afraid of retaliation, they're afraid of being disciplined, you know, or being isolated, and it's very traumatic. Thank you.
Have either of you ever filed a grievance?
Have I ever filed grievances? I filed grievances, filed with federal litigation in regards to the grievance process, which that's where I actually learned how Corporation Council and General Council were in cahoots in terms of preventing any form of hearing decisions that basically posed a liability question in regards to admittance of any conduct or misconduct by any of the staff, which was basically a preventative or prohibitive factor that kept a lot of these grievances from actually being sustained.
And maybe this is overreach, but are you, I'm assuming, when you filed a grievance, it was through the grievance box? Or you, or through speaking with someone?
There was different methods. But when I was in Rikers Island, there were boxes, okay? During the eighties, that was during the eighties. When I went back to Rikers Island, I noticed that a lot of grievances were handed to either correction also that was actually part of the grievance procedure, or grievance rep, if there was one.
Are there, is there anything else you would like the council to know about any experiences either of you have had with the grievance process?
The only thing, the only experience I've had with the grievance process is being a First Amendment-protected activity is that it doesn't work, not the way it's implemented, okay? The committee, it's a farce, okay? The one, the most dominating factor in terms of grievance process is Department of Corrections, staff, officers, okay? As you heard testimony earlier, captains are investigating officers, okay? They're in place to sabotage, okay? The ability of the grievance process to work the way it was intended to work, to protect the detainees' rights, and it doesn't work. My recommendations is that it should be reformed and/or a committee established in a way that outside source like DOC or an affiliated be part of that committee to control its aspects and keep the Department of Corrections' stranglehold of how the process is intended to work from being sabotaged.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you both. Our next two witnesses are Dionis, Dionis? I'm so sorry. Dionis Fernandez, Christopher Leon Johnson.
Ready? Good afternoon, Chair Nurse. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. The record made it clear, you know, I heard a lot of, with the panels today, about this stuff going on in Rikers. You know, the issue is that, you know, nobody's never caught the mayor. The mayor is the reason this is happening. You know, you had de Blasio, you know, the last mayor. Didn't really do anything about it. All he was doing was just- All he was doing was just performative stuff. But this mayor, Eric Adams, is totally with the Corrections Union. That's why when you have the inmates filing complaints, trying to get their grievances, nothing go anywhere. The truth is, this mayor is under a lot of heat with these unions and he's, he knows what's happening, but he's not going to go against him for people that we all know that is guilty before innocent. The problem with this system is, once you get arrested in New York City, you go to Rikers, but any, anywhere, you're guilty before innocent. Now, none of these public defender associations, Brooklyn Defenders, New York Legal Aid, Queens, they're not going to say a thing about how they treat people that's under, under indictment in the New York City court system. Once you're arrested, you, it's mostly everything falls in the burner of the prosecutor. It posts it, it all goes at the advantage of the prosecutor. That's why nothing ever happens. And when they see you there, they see you as a criminal. It's like the thing with the, when you're inmate, they already see you as you're guilty. That's why they, they treat the inmates like they get treated. No human being should go what they treat going through, but that's the nature of when you, when you under the beast, the belly of the beast called Rikers. What need to happen to City Council? I know you care, Sandy. A lot of you members, like Alexa Villas, Tiffany Caban, a lot of them care. The issue is you have a few members of City Council, they just don't give a damn, like Vicky Palladino. She treats every, she thinks that everybody in, that everybody in Rikers is guilty before proven innocent. That's when somebody passed away. She's one of the main ones that tried to defend the corrections when they do, when they're really wrong, while throwing the dead under the wolves. Yeah, like, just because you allegedly committed a crime doesn't mean you're guilty. You know, the thing is, you know, there's a lot of reform needed to happen. The inmates need a real, a real change in the system. And the problem is, like I said, this mayor is an issue. You have a few members of City Council, maybe Vicky Palladino. That's really, that's really a big problem with this. So you people, like, none of you people here need to change this stuff up. So, that's the facts, the mayor and Vicky Palladino. That's the main two, main two people that's in the way of this stuff. One mayor who's more concerned about getting that Republican nomination just in case Scott Stringer defeats him in the Democratic primary. And then you have one council member who is so over the top with her, with her words and blinded support of the police and blinded support of the corrections. You know, the mayor rocks with it. So, that's all I got to say. I gotta go. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now move to Zoom testimony. For those of you on Zoom, please wait for the sergeant-at-arms to unmute you before your, before beginning your testimony. And we have Alexis Quintero Broad on Zoom. You may begin when the sergeant calls you.
You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Nurse and committee members, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Alexis Quintero Broad and I'm a mitigation specialist in Osborn's Court Advocacy Services, CAS unit. As many of you know, Osborn is one of the oldest and largest criminal justice service organizations in the state. We serve 10,000 participants in programs from arrest to reentry. We have offices in Harlem, Brooklyn, Buffalo, Newburgh, White Plains, and Troy, with our headquarters being in the Bronx. We also have programming in 41 state prisons and on Rikers Island. Through advocacy, direct service, and policy reform, we work to create opportunities for people to heal, grow, and thrive. Osborn's Court Advocacy Services develop alternative and community-based sanctions for people convicted of crimes to protect public safety while also allowing people to keep their homes, jobs, stay at school, meet family responsibilities, and address the issues that led to their criminal justice involvement. Today, I'm here to discuss the void my clients and their families are experiencing when they call 311 to complain of the conditions on Rikers Island. At every facility on the island and adjacent to all the phones, there are signs encouraging people to report issues to the city via 311. These issues can range from abuse to unsanitary conditions to medical neglect. These calls are usually a last resort. No one is under the impression that a hotline call is going to lead to action faster than asking someone who works in the facility. The individuals call 311 after all other attempts to get what they need have failed out of desperation to voice their concerns to the city. The Board of Corrections has recently instituted their own hotline for the, for the incarcerated to voice complaints, but we're not aware of any significant actions or reports that have developed since its inception. DOC does, however, make the handful of calls they receive public in their monthly public hearings. While these calls are not always representative, representative of an urgent need, often they are. Sometimes they report that someone has missed their last 10 medical appointments and are now struggling with their mental health. Sometimes they report that someone is being threatened in their unit and that their requests for safety transferred have been denied with no reasoning over and over again. Sometimes there are reports about an abusive officer from someone concerned about retaliation. Sometimes there are just calls from family members that are really concerned about their incarcerated loved ones' well-being. After these individuals have exhausted all other reasonable options on the island, they and their families turn to the city for help. They know they might not get a response or any action in response to their complaint, but they feel better knowing that they reported it to the city and that hopefully someone will see it and do something. What the callers don't know is that these reports are routed back to the Department of Corrections, that the data is not public and that no oversight bodies are looking into the subjects of these calls. We've heard reports of people facing retaliation for 311 calls and in one specific instance of an officer telling one of our clients that your people can stop calling 311 now. These calls come out of desperation. There are people who are being silenced and abused and feel that they have nowhere to turn. We are concerned that there's a wealth of information on the day-to-day problems that Rikers hidden in 311 transcripts and that these reports are being kept from the public. Other city agencies are required to at least make the public aware of the number of inquiry and complaint 311 calls that are relevant to them. Why are those not relevant to DOC? Why is someone that's intentionally choosing to make a report outside of the DOC, would it be immediately rerouted back to the DOC with no measurable follow-up and response? Incarcerated people deserve a direct, safe route for addressing issues, not a circular process that endangers their safety. They've been calling, making reports, screaming into this void for years. And we believe that this crucial data on Rikers operations comprised of real-time voices of those living there remains absent from the public review. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. I believe if there's, if there's anyone else, there is no one else. Okay. Well, thank you so much and thank you to the committee staff for all of your work. There was someone who signed up, but we haven't seen them. If Alex Stein is on, please make yourself present. Not hearing you, we will end the public hearing portion of this hearing. Thank you to everyone who joined today and testified. And again, thank you to the staff. This is, we're now closing the hearing. Thank you.